Okay. Councilmember Sabatier, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are going to have an invocation tonight. So Pastor is here to give that invocation. Following that invocation, I would like to lead a moment of silence in memory of Dr. Cornelius, who is a longtime community member that has passed. I'm very sorry, we're doing the best we can with the equipment we have tonight. Thank you for your patience.
Lord, we thank you for the country that we live in, where we can speak and be heard. We thank you for the freedoms that we have. We thank you for our council members and our mayor. We thank you, Lord, for this process. And as we take just a moment, Lord, we humble ourselves and ask for your help. For the Lord is good and his mercy endures forever. And, Lord, you said in your word to trust in you with all of our heart, to not lean to our own understanding, but in all of our ways acknowledge you, that you would direct our paths. And Father, we ask that you will work everything together for good. We pray for a spirit of peace and a spirit of cooperation and a spirit that we all are part of this wonderful country and part of this community. Lord, let your spirit reign in this place, in our hearts, and we thank you for the goodwill that we have together. Lord, we believe for that tonight and we believe for your help, and we ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
If everybody could stand, please, again, for a moment of silence for Dr. Cornelius. Please and thank you. He was an important member of our community. He was my history teacher and a friend and a friend to many others here. He was part of Rotary, was a superintendent in Lake County Schools, as well as in Canacta Unified, and he will be remembered as a great man. Thank you.
Okay. So, good evening and thank you for attending the meeting tonight. Thank you, it's the largest crowd that I've had. But because of that, we're going to set some pretty strict guidelines. Everyone will get a chance to speak on their item. Public comment and agendacized items will be limited to two minutes. You will be timed and it will be enforced strictly because I want everyone to get a chance to be heard tonight. But also, if you hear someone that is saying a comment that you agree with, if you could just please show a sign of hands, so that we know that you agree with that, rather than coming up and reiterating things over and over and over. And then this will help expedite the time tonight. Oh, and yes, for safety reasons, thank you, we need to keep the aisles clear, so when you are going to come up and speak at the podium for your comments, if you could line up by the wall over here, so that we can keep the main aisles clear for safety. Yes, there's plenty of chairs over in the other room, to the left over here. We have cords and everything lined up. I mean, we're barely making it happen here as it is. We have to, we have to just do what we can do. We can probably turn the speaker or something, maybe. Yes, we will do our best, thank you. And again, whoa, this one works good. Sorry. Turn off all cell phones and devices that could be interrupted during the meeting, so that we can have our attention on the citizens and the work we have to do tonight. And I thank you in advance for your patience and calmness tonight, so we can get this very important matter settled. So with that, I will move into adoption of the agenda.
There are no changes.
There are no changes to the agenda tonight, thank you. Okay, very good. May I get a motion? Roll call vote? So I will be giving a proclamation this evening, declaring February 2015 Black History Month. I believe I have representatives from the NAACP and Mr. Mayo here, who I will be presenting to. So I don't think I can get this on mic, I'm gonna walk over to him and present this. So this is my second year presenting Mr. Mayo with this proclamation, and again, it's my honor. I've known him for most of my life, so this is very special for me to do. We will start with Black History Month. Whereas in February 2015, in the city of Clearlake, California, the Lake County Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, also known as NAACP, is officially celebrating Black History Month, which dates back to 1926, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson set aside special period of time in February to recognize the heritage and achievements of black Americans. Whereas, while the history of black Americans, also the story of countless, nameless heroes brought to our shores, who endured lives of bondage, oppression, and the deprivation of their civil rights, and ravages of bigotry and racism, it is a history for which most of the chapters have yet to be written, as black Americans contribute to the American promise. And whereas, for generations, African-Americans have strengthened our nation by urging reforms, overcoming obstacles, and breaking down barriers. And whereas, African-Americans, like Martin Luther King Jr., reflect a proud legacy of courage and dedication that is helping to guide our nation's success and prosperity. Visionary leaders from the past, like John Lewis, Ralph Albernathy, Ralph Bunche? Thank you. Abraham Joshua Herschel, Fred Shuttlesworth, Medgar Evers, Malcolm X, Rosa Parks, and Julian Bond possess clarity of purpose and were instrumental in exposing and addressing the issues that threatened our founding principles. And whereas, the Lake County Branch of the NAACP is dedicated to the principles of fostering civic, economic, and educational programs, and social justice throughout the city of Clearlake, and is dedicated to encouraging reflections on the rich history and teaching of African-Americans, and bearing witness to the progress, beauty, and achievements they have made throughout our community. And whereas, it is fitting that we set aside this month as a special time to acknowledge this important segment of our community. And now therefore, be it proclaimed, the city of Clearlake encourages all citizens to join in celebrating the diversity and character of our community, and highlighting the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. So we're going to move on to public comment. I have gotten a couple forms here. Public comment is for something that is not on our agenda tonight. That's what this part of public comment is for. So the first one, Adelia Leonard wants to talk about public comment time limits. So again, two minutes.
Hi, my name is Adelia Leonard, I'm a citizen of Clearlake, and I wanted to address the public comment time limit, as you mentioned. It is listed and is usually a three-minute time limit, however, at the last city council meeting, Agenda Item 13, people were allowed to speak past three minutes. They actually went up to five minutes and passed, I know because I personally timed it. After public speaking was closed, Mayor Denise Lucilow stated that she had allowed that to happen, because it was a passionate subject and he wanted to give ample time for people to express their concerns about medical marijuana. My concern with that is that you did not state that before public comment was open, so it was not fair. Everyone did not know that they could speak as long as they wanted to, such as myself and a few others that spoke on behalf of medical marijuana. We very strictly kept within the time limit of three minutes. So I would just propose that in the future, you would be more diligent with timing of public speakers, or before the meetings, inform what time limits will be, like you did tonight. It's very much appreciated. So, thank you so much.
We are gonna have to hold applause, though, I'm sorry, and we're just, it's gonna get too loud. Ryan Ulchich? But this is on the agenda, so we're not gonna be able to discuss that this evening. Well, you'll get your minutes, but just not right now. And then Ken Young also wanted to speak on something, but it's on the agenda. So Barbara Christowitz? Well, there you are, Barbara.
I can be fast.
Okay.
I am dressed for the, for the picking up litter. So I'm here to tell our community about a new group in Clearlake called CC4C, Citizens Caring for Clearlake. We are about a clean, pristine Clearlake, which means picking up litter and illegal dump sites, and trying to figure out how we can pick it up faster than somebody else dumps it again. It started for me in our neighborhood when children and some adults came to our door asking if we had work. I would look at the dump sites and say, boy, wouldn't it be great if we could set something up where we pay people to get and clean up the city? So lo and behold, somebody took me at my word and said, here's $10,000. Give me a tax write-off and try out your idea. So not long after, I was walking past a house in our neighborhood and I was picking up some trash, when a little boy asked, what are you doing? And I replied, picking up trash. He came out from behind the porch screen and offered me a dollar. So, I was stunned. So anyway, if you want to get involved in citizens cleaning up Clearlake, there are 31 people now on the email list, and why don't you let me know? I'm BarbaraChristowitz@hotmail.com, and I'm in the phone book at 995-0940. Come and help clean up our wonderful, beautiful city. Thanks.
No applause, even though it's a great cause. Very good, hands, great, love the hands. Okay, so is there anyone else that wants to speak for their two minutes on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Now is your chance, please come forward quickly.
Hi, everybody, my name's Amy Landrum, and I'm actually here representing Burns Valley School PTC. I have a couple printouts here for you guys. The reason I'm here is because our crossing guards are in danger every morning and every afternoon after school, the, all the calls every single day to the police department for the parking and the dangerous driving and illegally parking at Burns Valley School. So what I have here, I'm just gonna read it, it's a little bit simpler. Burns Valley School PTC is pleased to submit this proposal for safety to the Clearlake City Council and community members that are attending this evening. We are concerned for the safety of our students, parents, and school staff every day with our current lack of safety precautions at the street crossings and intersections. There are constant issues with the traffic before and after school. People are going too fast, not using their turn signals, or letting people walk, excuse me, not using, not using their turn signals to let people walking or driving be aware of their intentions as they're pulling away from the curbs. Our objective is to provide safety to everyone while crossing the street before and after school, provide safety to the staff while acting as crossing guards, attempt to eliminate the dangerous driving in front of the school on school days, provide more parking in the limited area near the school, cut down on, if not totally eliminate, the service calls before and after school. Solution suggestions that we have is, is there a way we can put in speed bumps? Can we turn Pine Street into a south-to-north one-way that would create all kinds of diagonal parking on the opposite side of the street where we're not allowed to park? And it would, it would create just a huge opening there. Or another possibility is, can we get the in-street pedestrian crossing signs that are right here between Austin Parks, or over there in front of Lower Lake Elementary School? And I was hoping maybe you guys could consider this to put on a future agenda for us. And that's all I have, I'd like to give you what I have here.
Good evening, and God bless everyone. My name is Crystal Williams, and I'm here to let you know, since we're on Black History, here by Miss C, we are a multicultural hair salon, we will be having our fourth annual Black History event, and I just want to invite the whole community. I'm really excited about this, and it's taken a lot out of me, and a lot of people out here in the audience have participated in the years before, and I wanted to invite our community. It will be Saturday, February 28th, the last Saturday of this month. It is a potluck, bring your favorite dish, if not, just come on, we have live music by Howard Dawkins, he'll be there, we have a beautiful view of the lake, and I want to invite you guys here by Miss C, Fourth Annual Black History Event. Thank you and have a blessed evening.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'm gonna close public comment, and...
Hi, my name is Ja Universe. I'd like to say, as increasingly complex as the world's problems seem, the solution remains embarrassingly simple. All the world's problems can be solved in a garden. Now, today, everything is messed up, the biomes, earth, have been disrupted or destroyed in many cases, and if we as a species don't come together and keystone to take responsibility, we will see extinctions. We need to dismantle global and renew local. Tear down dangerous infrastructure, nuclear power plants, dams, and police stations. We need to protect our local land base, because we can't have sex without it. If you're civilized, your hands are already blood red. You have slaves, you have politicians, you have things you've never made from countries you've never been. Rip up asphalt and plant gardens, green the cities, allow fragile wetland, biomes, marshes, mangroves, tributaries, tribal lands to recover and return to their original nature. Tell your local code enforcement you are free and wild and that you own yourself and the products of your labor, and that your only obligation is to your local ecology. And feel free to grow sustainable and organic medicine, and to build unpermitted ownerships and other sustainable dwellings at your own creativity, without the influence of laws, rules, and codes that you don't recognize, because these same laws, rules, codes, and enforcement mean ecological death, and destruction, and deforestation of the biomes that ensure life. So, not only do I not recognize your laws, your badges to grant extra rights, your permits, your taxes, regulations, codes, and rules, because they aren't real, but more importantly, they are inconsistent with my morals. The planet is real, and these politicians and these politics are fictional, fake, mother goose, and shit like that. There are no rulers, I am free, independent, beautiful human being.
Time.
I owe myself, I owe my labor, taxes, theft.
Thank you. Public comment is now closed completely, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone from the council that would like to pull the consent agenda, any items?
If I can, please pull item number seven.
Very good, item number seven. We can approve the rest and then talk about seven, so may I get a motion?
I would like to accept the consent agenda with the removal of item seven as submitted.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Portino?
Aye.
Mayor Lucilow?
Aye.
Excuse me, that's later in the agenda, and we will be discussing each item, and
you will get your time. Is there something you'd like to pull? Number two?
It's...
Okay, it's already been approved at this point. You're more than welcome to come in and talk about item number two, it's available. Thank you. Thank you. Large crowd this evening, I'm sorry. Okay, item number seven?
Yeah, item number seven was about the visitor's center, and on the contract that we signed with the county, it states that we need to have the insurances approved, and I saw that was a list of insurances in the reports that you gave us. And I went back and forth between what the contract says we're supposed to do and what we had inside our report. It says we need a compensation insurance, which was in there, a general liability insurance, which was in there, an automobile liability insurance, which was in there, but I didn't see a professional liability, or I didn't see proof of property insurance from the city that's in there, and maybe that one's just completely separate, as far as the property insurance.
Before any work can proceed, all certificates of insurance that are required for this particular project must be submitted for review by our city clerk, and we don't sign off on the project to proceed until that has been accomplished.
Perfect, that's all I wanted to know, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve item number seven on the consent agenda.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Portino?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Portino?
Aye.
Mayor Lucilow? Aye.
Moving on to business. Item number eight, introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 173-2015, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Clearlake amending Chapter X of the Clearlake Municipal Code, adding Section 10 through 8, abatement of public nuisances, and 10 through 9, administrative penalties, and repealing and replacing Section 10 through 7, medical marijuana cultivation, to ban the cultivation of medical marijuana. I will refer this to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is on the agenda as a result of direction at the January 22nd council meeting to return with an ordinance for your consideration, that would have adopted prohibit the growing of marijuana within the city limits. That direction was based on information provided at that meeting, previous discussions, public comment, and comments received by most all of you, I think, individually. I do want to indicate to the council that since the last meeting, it was brought to my attention that one of the pages of the maps that was put up on the wall showing fairly large growths within the city limits, did have an inadvertent letter, an inadvertent error, in that two parcels were highlighted on one of the pages as grow sites, when in fact they were not. That area has been corrected. Tonight, our city attorney will review the ordinance drafted for your consideration and is prepared to answer questions. But prior to having the review of that ordinance, I'd like to have our finance director, Chris Bacnell, provide information that will address a frequent question that I think all of you have been receiving, and certainly the staff has, which is, without code enforcement, how can the city enforce the provisions of not just this proposed or current ordinance, but other municipal code violations specific to health and safety in our community? With failure of the last sales tax measure that would have provided funds for a full code enforcement program, staff began to work on a way to still create a program that would begin to address some, at least some, of the violations that currently exist within the city. As you're all aware, code enforcement is one of the council's four priority goals, and therefore, important to find a way to make progress in meeting the intent of that goal. A more detailed presentation will be made at the March, one of the March council meetings on the program as a whole, but this evening, I would like to have Chris report on, now, on the funding source that has been identified to enable the city to address the financial obstacle the city has had for many years in funding code enforcement. And then following that, our city attorney will review the ordinance, and we'll take your questions prior to public comment.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. A criticism of the no-growth ordinance is that if you didn't enforce it under the old ordinance, what enforcement will there be under the new ordinance? A reasonable question. The city's code enforcement issue is not just related to the no-growth ordinance under discussion here, but also related to the overall lack of significant and sustained enforcement effort for all municipal codes, designed to protect the health and safety of the citizens and visitors. A major obstacle to code enforcement of any kind has been the severe contraction in budgetary resources in the past several years. Staff has developed a plan to significantly increase code enforcement. The city was awarded a grant from CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, to improve Phillips Avenue and 18th Street. CDBG has determined that before the city can access that grant, we must have a plan to spend and actually spend, to spend and actually spend our existing and anticipated CDBG program income. That plan is called a supplemental. We have estimated that over the next two and a half years, the city will have approximately $500,000 of program income. $500,000 of program income. One of the allowable CDGB programs is for code enforcement. Staff has prepared, submitted, and has received approval from CDBG to implement this effort. The basic plan is to staff code enforcement with three officers, an allocation for attorney's fees to prepare abatement warrants and orders, and an allocation for support staff to process citations, abatement orders, administrative penalties, and liens. Staff anticipates that this program will be ramped up in the very near future. Additional details about this effort will be discussed at a city council meeting in March. I want to call to the council's attention that this was a group effort with input and suggestions from all departments. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. At the January 22nd meeting, council directed that staff return back an ordinance regarding the cultivation of medical marijuana. The direction was to draft an ordinance that would ban or prohibit the cultivation of marijuana in the city and include enforcement mechanisms to accomplish that. Before you, in the agenda is such an ordinance, whereas the city's previous ordinance permitted marijuana cultivation on a sliding scale based on the size of the property. This ordinance would repeal and replace that ordinance and include two additional measures regarding the enforcement of the ordinance, one for nuisance abatement and the other one for administrative citations. In section 10.8 of the, well, the ordinance at the beginning does include provisions that would ban the cultivation of marijuana in all zones within the city. In section 10.8, it includes mechanisms for the civil abatement of public nuisance. It includes the due process elements to conduct such abatement. It starts that the city would investigate the grow. Secondly, the owner and occupant would be given an order to abate such grow. They could then request a hearing before the city council regarding the abatement order. The city then has the ability to recover costs through a due process hearing. The expenses would be documented and itemized, the expenses would be posted on the property, and a hearing before the city council would be, would be conducted. The city would then have the ability to collect such costs via assessment on the property and a lien on the property. In addition to the public nuisance abatement, the... In section 10.9, the ordinance would allow for the administrative penalties to be levied based on the grows on the properties. It would include $1,000 per plant and $100 per plant if the plant remains pass a...
This behavior will not be tolerated. We will, if it happens, we will shut down this meeting if we need to. So, if you would like to be heard and have this happen, please be courteous to the people who are talking and follow the rules of this evening. Thank you.
And the enforcement thereof of the administrative penalties would include the similar due process hearings, whereas the, there would be a hearing officer that would hear the appeal, and the collection mechanisms also would include via civil action lien on the property or an assessment on the property. I do note that there are two minor modifications to the ordinance, one on page four at section It references Clear Lake in two words that would be changed to one word. And then also on page eight, a minor modification at 10-8.140, it says that there'd be, the recorder of the city, that actually be recorder of the county as opposed to the city. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything from the council before we, before we move public?
Everybody hear me okay? All right. As everybody knows, I was the dissenting council member last meeting we had on January 22nd to reconsider this as a zero grow. So, tonight, I would like to present my ordinance that I would hopefully be able to use as a first reading for tonight. We'll let the city attorney make the decision on that one, whether that is allowed or not. But I'm going to read to you my, what's called the Zero Grow Marijuana Ordinance with a permit exception. It reads exactly the same as far as the abatement process, other than I would like to take out the summary abatement portion. And the beginning portions of it where the introduction also reads the same, the prohibitions are what are different. So, I'm going to read them to you word for word and hopefully I won't take more than five to 10 minutes of your time. So, these are the prohibitions. Any medical marijuana cultivation without an approved residential ag permit is prohibited. Any cultivation of medical marijuana on vacant lots or parcels with no approved residential use as defined below is prohibited. Any outdoor cultivation within 600 feet of a public or private school as measured from the property line of the cultivation site to the property line of the school is prohibited. Any outdoor cultivation within 600 feet of a childcare center as measured from the property line of the cultivation site to the property line of the childcare center is prohibited. Cultivation that is in the place at the time of adoption within 600 feet shall be grandfathered in. Cultivation of medical marijuana is prohibited within any mobile home park as defined within Clear Lake municipal code unless cultivated within a designated garden area that has been set aside by park management or cultivated on a mobile home park leased lot that exceeds 4,500 square feet. In such cases, cultivation amounts shall be limited to that amount of medical marijuana that may be cultivated on those premises in compliance with the amount set forth in this ordinance. Cultivation of medical marijuana is prohibited within any property that is improved with multifamily dwelling as defined within the Clear Lake municipal code. Processing of medical marijuana including but not limited to drying, trimming, weighing, packaging, and storing for later distribution shall be limited to that amount of medical marijuana that may be cultivated on those premises in compliance with this ordinance. The cultivation of marijuana shall not utilize water that has been or is illegally diverted from any stream, creek, lake, or from any other adjacent parcel. Here lies the regulations for outdoor. Outdoor cultivation of more than six medical marijuana plants accessory to an approved residential use is prohibited on any size parcel. The edge of the cultivation area shall be located no closer than 10 feet from the property line. It is prohibited for any outdoor cultivation to be visible from the public right-of-way or publicly traveled private roads. Here lies the indoor regulations. Cultivation shall only be permitted in a detached, fully enclosed, and secure accessory structure in said cultivation area, including the plant canopy, shall be limited to 80 square feet per parcel or residence, whichever is less. The cultivated marijuana may be used only by the qualified patient and not distributed, sold, given, or transferred in any other way to any other person or organization. The use of a detached, fully enclosed, and secure accessory structure for cultivation of medical marijuana shall not reduce the required parking required per Clear Lake municipal code. Residential accessory structures used for cultivation shall meet the following criteria. The structure shall be provided with a locking door or doors. If a secure structure is not feasible and the cultivation building is an unsecured structure, then it shall additionally be surrounded by a secure, solid, six-foot-high fence located within 10 feet of the unsecured structure and equipped with a lockable gate. The structure shall be located in the rear yard portion of the lot and maintain a minimum of a 10-foot setback from the side and rear property lines and from any other buildings on the parcel. Any accessory structure utilized for cultivation of marijuana shall be legally constructed with a building permit if it exceeds 120 square feet of size. No more than 80 square feet of floor area shall be used for the cultivation of marijuana. The plant canopy shall be contained within the 80, shall be contained, within the 80 square feet of floor area. All electrical and plumbing fixtures shall be installed with a valid building permit from the city. Such building permits will only be issued to the owner of the property. If the resident is proposing to convert an exist... That wasn't me. If the resident is proposing to convert an existing accessory structure or a portion of an existing structure for cultivation of marijuana, an inspection will be required to ensure compliance with this chapter. Medical marijuana cultivation lighting shall comply with the California Building, electrical, and fire codes as adopted by the city. Flammable or volatile gas products or generators shall not be used within... Detached, ah, any detached structure used for the cultivation of medical marijuana. Any detached, fully enclosed, and secure structure used for the cultivation of medical marijuana must have a ventilation and filtration system installed that shall prevent nuisance marijuana plant odors from exiting the interior of the structure. If a permanent built-in ventilation and filtration system is installed, it shall be subject to the issuance of a building permit. Approval by the building official and must be installed prior to commencing cultivation within the detached, fully enclosed, and secure structure. Accessory structures utilized for cultivation shall be ventilated with odor-controlled filters and shall not create an odor, humidity, or mold problem on the subject property or adjacent properties. Other activities may occur within a detached, fully enclosed, and secure accessory structure where medical marijuana is cultivated, provided that the cultivation area within the structure, including the plant canopy, does not exceed 80 square feet of floor area, and further provided that the cultivation area is segregated from all other building uses by permitted walls and all other conditions of this chapter are satisfied. Some of you may recognize this, this is basically the exact same, I took out some similarities that were already set up front at the beginning, such as the proximity to schools. This is the exact same ordinance that Lakeport has for its indoors. Now for the residential ag permit and what it does for you. The permit fee of the residential ag permit is $50. This $50 will give you a mandatory compliance check, and I'm skipping around, I'm sorry about that. A single, a single compliance check by code enforcement, starting as of July 1st, is what you will be paying for, that's what the $50 is for, of each grow season, and will be made to ensure that all rules and regulations are followed. A copy of the doctor recommendation and the residential ag permit contract must be posted visibly near your grow. And a residential ag permit must be obtained by May 31st of each growing season. The regulations for outdoor prohibit, other than already said, prohibited from cultivating more than six medical marijuana plants per parcel. The height of the cultivation shall not be above the fence line or visible from the public right-of-way or publicly traveled private roads. All outdoor cultivation areas shall be screened with solidwood fencing from public view and be constructed pursuant to provisions set forth in section 18-5.8 of the City of Clear Lake municipal code pertaining to fences, walls, and hedges. A variance on your fence can be pursued and purchased to extend your fence to eight feet, but you may not extend it to eight feet without a variance. Indoor, prohibited from using more than 80 square feet per parcel and must meet accessory structure criteria as stated in indoor regulations 3A through 3I that I just read. Lack of compliance will result in a written report describing what regulation has been broken, and the resident will have 72 hours to resolve the regulation issue. If within 72 hours, the cultivation is still in violation, then the residential ag permit will be terminated. Any cultivation not permitted with a residential ag permit or a residential ag permit that has been terminated will be abated and eradicated through the abatement clause offered through the city's ordinance for the zero grow. Abatement and eradication of plants will result in fines of $200 per plant in excess of eradication, that's one of the differences, instead of the thousand. A signed written landlord approval letter stating that their tenant can purchase a residential ag permit for the cultivation of medical marijuana is also necessary prior to purchasing a residential ag permit. This permit does not allow for refining harvested medical marijuana with gas, water, or heat. Show original doctor's recommendation or state ID card that states you are eligible to grow medical marijuana, and it's required so the city can make a copy for their records. And that is all I have. Real quick, I wanted to make a statement. I misspoke at the last meeting. Unfortunately, I said something that I shouldn't have said. The city itself did not fail to enforce the law. We failed to create the right tool to be able to enforce the law, and that's what we are here to do today. And so, I wanted to give you this alternative plan so that before public comment, we can all discuss whether you choose to go with what the city wants or whether you choose to go with what I'm offering or a combination of both put together. Thank you very much for listening.
Is there anything else from the council before I open public comment? So, I will open public comment now. Again, line up against the far wall over here. Two minutes will be strictly timed by the vice mayor so that everyone gets to speak. Be courteous, be quiet, and let the speaker have their time to speak. Oh, and thank you, and you even told me that. And everyone will get one opportunity to speak. There will not be repeated times to the podium, so make sure you say what you need to say during your two minutes, because that's it, one time. The first speaker may come to the podium.
When does my time start? Start it over, Gina. Number one, I was at the last city council... Start my time over. Sure thing. I was at the last city council meeting. What Joan stated previously about there were some inaccuracies in the slides that were put on, there was more than just one or two, Joan. All of those slides were wrong, except for the one that showed the grow house at Denise's Neighbors. The other ones were the tops of trees. Now, there might have been some previous grow there, but at the time that those maps were taken, they were trees. And you people sold us the bag of goods that those were grows. I took and tracked back seven months where you stated that those maps were taken. Seven months would have been the first part of June or the end of May. People up here don't normally start their outdoor grows at that time of the year. You people were selling us a bag of goods. Also, Chief Clausen down there says that they did, his police department did a number of trips to people's houses, and nobody was in compliance. So, therefore, Craig, why didn't you give these people a side tape?
Time. Time. Thank you. Next speaker? Next speaker? Two minutes, your time was up. Next speaker? Last warning.
Can you hear me?
No clapping, please.
My name's William Strano. A lot of people know me around here, but I'm just curious as to, obviously, we're getting, gonna get screwed by the bad, a few bad apples that are doing major grows, but yet, nope, by where I live, there were very many that were quite obvious just driving down the street, but never once was there a police officer there to do a compliance check. Why? I mean, when they're that obvious? People like that are taking the people that are doing what, growing our medicine according to the ordinances and making it hard for us to get our medicine. A lot of us are low-income, we can't afford to buy it, so we grow it. But yet, when you drive down the street and you look at a corner house and you can see 40 or 50 plants peeking up over the fence line, why is there nobody there to check on them? And I'm all for compliance checks because I'm totally behind this, and I mean, we should follow the laws and the rules. Second of all, the permit situation, are we going to issue just permit, so many permits? Or are they going to allow as many permits, applications to be filled as possible? Are you going to set a limit on it? Only 1,500 people can get permits. We need to look over what we're doing. The amendment by Bruno there is, it's more reasonable than what you're putting down and trying to control people from getting the medicine that they need or want because they can't afford it. Not even the government does that to us. They give us Medi-Cal to get our medicine, or the prescription medicines to pay for them and stuff like that, but here, there's no government subsidy for this. But yet, people do need it. It is a known medicine for cancer patients, AIDS patients, and older people with chronic arthritis, but yet, you're going to deny us that right to medicate and to be a well person because of a few bad apples. So, I think that maybe we should get back together with the police department and find out why, when you drive down a street and you know there's a grow there, why aren't you knocking on that door asking for, okay, can I see you compliant?
Hello, my name is Declan Barnes-Nalton, and I'm gonna take a different take on this. I think Lake County should embrace marijuana cultivation, because the people of California have approved this, and it's a moneymaker, and it brings money into the community, and this is an important factor. And more effort should be like on the meth problem here, and, you know, you know, and the people that raid, and, you know, and steal crops, and, you know, and they're like meth heads that do like these things. Most pop people are like very peace-loving, very gentle people, it's a peace-loving kinda thing, you know, I mean, you know. But I think like you guys are taking the wrong attitude towards this, I mean, you should embrace this, like it's legal in California, and you, this could be like something that like, actually like bring, it brings money into Lake County, which is something that's desperately needed. But what you should like focus on is like these frickin' raiders, and the meth heads, and like the, you know, and that stuff, and not like, not peace-loving like frickin' people that are doing medicinal, like, and good works, you know, I mean, if you meet a pot smoker, like, they're not a bad person, you know, they're not, but, I mean, just by nature, but you, and like in harmony, you know, it's so much different, and, but, like all these other things, and alcohol is cool, and weed is not, I'm sorry, there's something wrong with this equation, you know, but it is, you should be embracing this, and you should like, say, like, yeah, we are the county that like frickin', like, you know, that allows marijuana, not the one that like frickin' wants to ban it, like, and, you know, and if you sell it, like, what the hell? I mean, you know, I'm sorry, but, all right, sorry, thank you very much.
Excuse me, no applauding, let's get through public comment.
If I could interject, if you applaud and hoot and holler and make a ruckus in the middle of someone's two minutes, you're taking away their time to make their point. So you're doing the person who's speaking a disservice by being disruptive.
First off, your ordinance is doing everybody disservice. Thousand dollars a plant is nothing more than extortion. You're sitting back there wagging your finger at us, telling us, well, we gotta follow by the rules, but then you change the rules, you change it right after you get elected and get put into office. Then you're gonna go change the rule and try to extort money from me, and if I don't pay you, you're gonna steal my property. Last time you stole property was chalk, and you was red-tagging houses and taking them. If you guys want, you could buy me out, I don't need to pay property tax to you anymore on my four places, buy me out, and I'll leave right now.
Hello?
Remember, hands up if you support, and quietness, period.
My name is Hezekiah Allen, I am a resident of Sacramento. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak today, to everyone here who gathered to express your perspective on this topic, thank you for coming and participating. I am the executive director of the Emerald Growers Association, we're a trade association, statewide membership of eight-hundred-and-fifty members, cannabis patients, farmers, and businesses that support us. We focus our work primarily in Sacramento, because that's where the real work needs to be done, but every now and then, a local policy gets our attention long enough to come out and voice our opinion. Usually, they involve the word "ban," because bans are nonsense. Bans are not compassionate, bans close the door on opportunity, and bans are not enforceable. Councilmember Sabatier, I applaud your leadership in wanting to have an actual policy conversation about how we can abate nuisance and deal with the problems without closing the door on opportunity, without turning our backs on patients, how we can embrace compassion, community values, and the spirit of partnership to work together to enact real sensible policy with regard to cannabis cultivation in the state of California. So I encourage you, don't go the way of the ban, it doesn't solve anything, you can't enforce it, it won't help, we'll be here year in and year out, talking about this again and again. Let's craft good policy, let's look forward together. We're willing to help, we have policy solutions, we'd love to engage in dialogue, but a ban closes the door on opportunity, and it closes the door on public dialogue. Thank you for the time tonight.
My name is Suzanne Scholz, and I live in the city of Clear Lake, and I wish I had had an opportunity to look at Bruno's information before I prepared what I want to say tonight. But part of what I want to say is the same thing that I said the last time, we need an ordinance that's easily enforceable, and I think no grow is. It needs to be as strict as anywhere else in the county, and no grow would be, would meet that criteria. I think it also needs to be compassionate, and I think actually, the ordinance is. There is a provision for appealing and abatement notice for just cause, which allows for just cause to be taken into consideration in the current ordinance. It also does not eliminate the dispensaries, which other communities are doing. The number of people here to speak for allowing grows in the city shows actually the magnitude of the problem. With so many quote sanctioned grows, it lends itself to other non-sanctioned grows and makes enforcement much, much more difficult. Lakeport allows indoor grows. Our indoor grows right now result in the destruction of whole houses, so this option does not seem right for the city of Clear Lake. This ordinance is designed to break the unfortunate... This ordinance is designed to break the unfortunate pattern established last year. Once that is accomplished, the ordinance can be revised or reviewed again for what makes sense. What makes sense to me right now is no grow, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Donna, and I work in the city of Clear Lake vicinity. Tonight, I am expressing my personal views in supporting the no grow ordinance. Lake County, in particular the city of Clear Lake, is known for having the worst health statistics in the state, highest poverty in the state, and even though the numbers are misleading, the media has reported high crime rate, this is unacceptable. Tonight, we have the opportunity to change, tonight, we have to make the first step to make the better future for our children and our community. Tonight, we begin the journey to bring Clear Lake back to a desirable place to work, live, and play. We have high unemployment rate, but we also have good-paying jobs that are not filled because we cannot attract qualified workers. A recent example, we offered a teaching position to a qualified candidate, she and her family visited over winter break. She loved the facilities, teachers, and administrators that she met, but she could not raise her kids in this community. I believe that Clear Lake can become a desirable place to live, work, and play, and together we can make this happen. We have the highest death rate from all causes in the state, that's a horrible statistic, especially knowing that many of those factors start in childhood. The Center for Disease Control has defined adverse childhood experiences, or the ACIS factors. Prolonged exposure, as well as the number of factors, is highly correlated with long-term health and social outcomes. Poverty is one of those factors. The percent of students qualifying for free and reduced lunch in the city of Clear Lake is nearly ninety percent. Inadequate living conditions, lack of appropriate clothing, and poor nutrition are evident on a daily basis. Some of our kids only get food at school, this is not acceptable. Pass the, passing the no grow ordinance, passing the no grow ordinance will not in and of itself...
We are timing it, and you are disrupting, we won't have it.
Passing the no grow ordinance will not in and of itself change the entire dynamics of the city, but it is the cornerstone in building a new future for Clear Lake. We need clear leadership and consistent actions to demonstrate that we are committed to this journey. Our assets are abundant, the shoreline of the lake, beautiful vistas, areas for park, cleanest air, and amazing community spirit. That is a Clear Lake that I want to be part of. Make a commitment to invest, and others will follow, thank you.
I was watching the timer too, okay. First question I'd like you all to ask yourself at that table, looking around here tonight, these are your constituents, do you think that your idea represents what the majority wants tonight, or at all? Okay. The new ordinance is only one year old, you know, we can't come to an accurate conclusion on how effective it's been with the statistics the chief of police brings, just, they're incomplete, strictly incomplete, you know, you gotta be transparent about the data, how you came to that conclusion, okay? You know, by enacting this ordinance, it penalizes those who were in compliance, it's sorta like saying if a couple people get arrested for a DWI, we should take everybody's driver's license away. I mean, it also forces anybody who needs their medicine to go buy it at compassionate clubs, okay? That's an unaffordable thing for a lot of people. It's much more affordable to be able to grow it yourself. And to complain about the smell of the marijuana, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna misdirect our city's limited resources towards harassing medical marijuana patients when we have the meth labs, we have the smell, the lake to address, I mean, if you wanna complain about the smell of anything, the lake smells six months out of the year, the marijuana harvest smells a month to two months out of the year. It's inexcusable that you guys are misdirecting our city funds, our taxpayer dollars, to harass medical marijuana patients, and not address the bigger issues in the city. Have you seen the roads in the city? The county's already being sued right now for violating people's Fourth Amendment constitutional rights, based on a similar ordinance that they passed. And I can tell you don't want me to talk as long as the last lady, okay, so I'll make this quick. Really?
Hi, my name is Sandy. Few years ago, I had colon reconstruction surgery, where I was on a feeding tube for almost four weeks. I was in bed with my eyes closed, rolled up in a little tiny ball, till somebody came up to me and said, here, try this, which I did, and you know what, in thirty minutes, I was standing up, and I was checking my email, which I hadn't done in a year and a half. Now, I started a petition for this town, because I saw there was a lot of people that were in my position, they were real patients. I got three-hundred-and-thirty-seven signatures within three-and-a-half days. I saw that the zero tolerance people only had forty-five, they got forty-five signatures, yes they did, within a week. We were up, three days, we were getting a signature every ten minutes. I gave you a stack, the stack is sitting right there, you can clearly see it's huge, that's only one-third of the signatures we got, I printed a hundred of them, we got three-hundred-and-thirty-seven plus. I want to talk about the clubs. If the clubs cannot grow their own, the price of the clubs will go up, and the access will be limited. Number two, six plants is what California allows, that's what we should be allowing our own residents here. Next, I believe that the quality of lives for actual patients, real patients, will go down. I remember actually waking up in the morning and thinking, oh, I want to look at this little plant, because my neighbor had some plants, and I would wake up and actually get up to go look, I just couldn't believe it, it was like so cool. I always wanted to do it myself, so I bought a house here, and I thought, I'm gonna do this, but because of all of these laws, I have been afraid to do it. So I've been sitting here buying it from the CCC at over a hundred-and-fifty bucks, when I don't have that money, but I need it, because I don't want to be curled up in a little ball with my eyes closed, not being able to talk or look at people. I couldn't walk for two years, I had to get on a treadmill to learn to walk again. It helped me walk, it helped me eat, thank you for hearing my story, people.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for your time on this matter. First, I would like to address the matter of crime and the pros and cons. I would like to address violent crime in particular. Colorado, since the one year that Colorado has passed legalization of marijuana, violent crime in particular has dropped three-point-four percent. Washington State, half the amount of time that they've had legal, crime has dropped, violent crime has dropped seven percent. Colorado has brought in three-hundred million in the first year in tax revenue, so much so that after paying for schools and infrastructure and anything else that the state needs, they're not going to be giving that surplus back to the members, to the citizens of the state with their taxes. Washington has already brought in a hundred-and-eighty-four million, and again, half a year, same situation. If we follow the ordinance that you would like to enact, the cost of medicine from dispensaries will rise, large-scale grows will still grow despite the ordinance, they won't care. Yes? Okay. Despite the ordinance, therefore driving cash-strapped patients to buy off the streets equalling more crime. If we properly enforce Bruno's proposed ordinance, more time may be spent by law enforcement and the community targeting the large-scale grows that damage the environment, drive up violent crime. Making Clear Lake a safer, cleaner, more unified community that can prosper for patient, non-patient alike. Patients following Bruno's ordinance will lower crime and cost on local government, and allow said patients to cultivate cannabis medications within the law at low costs of the patient who are already cash-strapped. None of us wants to break the law. What we just, we just want an ordinance that works for all of us. Cal-Normal is in support of us as well, we have received a letter, don't have the time to speak about it, one more little bit, I promise. With this ordinance, the problem will still exist and continue to get worse, creating an even more overwhelming situation for local law enforcement to have to deal with.
Hello, my name is Frank Costner, and I've been a member of this community for, since nineteen-seventy-five. I've lived in the avenues for twenty-seven years, and I have lived in the avenues for over twenty-seven years, and I'm seriously thinking about moving. It's off the hook, the marijuana is, it is not six plants, it's a hundred plants, every lot is full. My son does not feel safe walking down the street, he does not feel safe, the dogs are attacking him, because there's all these dogs running all over the place, because people are having dogs to guard their marijuana. I am not anti-marijuana, it would be, would have been really nice to see this community get together and help enforce what was going on, but it was off the hook, okay? I live in the avenues, and I don't want to live there anymore, and it makes me sad, it makes me want to cry, because it is crazy, you know, it is crazy what's going on out there, and if you guys don't see it, then there's, then you guys are blinding yourselves. This is the crime, serious crime, there are shootings and stabbings and robings in the avenues, almost a daily occurrence, you know, it's, where's the reports? I see the police, I hear, I have a scanner, I see it, I live it, I drive by it, you know, and, and it's really sad that this compassionate thing that helps people, that people have destroyed it and ruined it for everyone, that, you know, I'm sorry, but you have ruined it for everyone, those people with the hunter plants, and having five, six, seven lots all full of marijuana, nobody's even living on them, you've ruined it for everybody, you know, and it's really, makes me upset, that I live in this community that could have been, it could have been a great experience, but my son does not even want to live here anymore.
No, 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 please, no.
Hi, my name is Ken Young, I've been a certified addiction specialist for twenty-seven years, and I've worked with the HIV/AIDS population in Lake County, and with hospice services of Lake County, and the one thing that they all have in common is there are points that intersect with, when people get really sick. I have a real strong objection to something that nobody's mentioned, is the fifty-dollar permit fee. Most of the clients that I worked with at C-CHAP didn't have fifty dollars, they don't have fifty dollars, you know, they can't even survive, you know, buy groceries, and they get sick. I've seen people there and at hospice that were actively dying, and they were able to get medical marijuana, thank you. to get medical marijuana, thank you, and, uh, and their lives changed. You know, all of a sudden, they could eat, they weren't wasting anymore. I mean, this is real, you know, this isn't just a slogan, this is real, and, um, it's right here, and it's right here. Thank you.
My name is Scott Notall. I called and talked to a couple of legal firms about Brown Act violations, and they asked me if you even knew what that was. And I thought they were kidding, but they weren't. So we're all here now and I'll move on. The whole ordinance is on shaky ground because of the aforementioned Brown Act violations, but more than that, I want to tell you my concerns. My girlfriend Sandy, who can't be here tonight because she has cancer, is a Realtor and a grandmother, and a cancer survivor. Sandy's the type of person you would never see smoking pot, yet she would be the first person to defend it, because both she and I know how much it helped her with nausea and pain and healing. I hope and pray that no one here gets cancer. I hope and pray that none of you will ever need the medicine that Sandy gets to save her life. Thank God there's help. Don't take it away. Prop 215 is the letter of the land, that is the law of the land, okay? That has been passed and is no further debate. I don't want the police involved with pot unless there's a citizen complaint document on file in the police department. Six plants are minimum medicine for one person. Clear Lake is number ten most dangerous place to be in California, okay? Clear Lake is the thirty-eighth most likely place to go bankrupt. How about working on that?
Hi, my name is Glenn Goodman, I work at the, at Lower Lake High School, helping to educate some of your high school age citizens. I think that the question that you ought to be asking is how to best serve those citizens. I think Lake County has proven that too little regulation isn't a good thing, but I think the whole country has proven that too much prohibition creates the very situation that we would, I think, want to avoid. It creates the war in our, in our cities, it creates the crime. Eighty percent, eighty to ninety percent of all non-drug-related crime really is drug-related because it's to get money to buy artificially high-priced drugs. You have to ask yourself, at what point do you balance regulations so that it doesn't hurt the citizens? If you go too far, what you're doing is you're forcing everyone inside, and so that makes it harder for law enforcement, although it's a mixed bag for law enforcement because the increased crime gives them better job security. But by adding hay to the haystack, you don't make it simpler to solve the real problem, which is people who are exploiting 215 to make absurd amounts of money. If you allow legitimate patients to grow a reasonable amount, such as Bruno has suggested six, which is what the state recommends as well, then that puts, and I, that isolates the people who are breaking the law and who are exploiting, uh, the law to make money. And in fact, it almost seems like the, the regulations as written will benefit those people at the exclusion of everybody else. Certainly, the citizens are not benefited by increased fire danger, lowered home values, with the mold and all the stuff when you force it indoors. Why not have sensible regulations that will maximize what, um... All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Daniel from Lower Lake, and, um, I wanna thank the council for considering this significant issue that we've all been facing here in this county for a long time. Um, I'd like to just voice my opinion in support of Bruno's compromise, uh, solution. Um, while far from perfect, I do feel like it's, um, something in the middle ground that we all could potentially live with. I would say, um, uh, one modification I would maybe suggest with some of the council members that might not be comfortable with, uh, the potential of six big plants within somebody's backyard is to consider a canopy size, outdoor in addition to indoor. And I would suggest potentially, um, a ten by ten or a twelve by twelve, so a hundred square foot or a hundred and forty-four square foot canopy. That way, somebody can't take their whole yard and fill it up because they know how to grow six very large plants, but at the same time, they can still grow enough for themselves and obviously not be in it to, on the profiteering side of things. I think, um, one of those solutions with Bruno, I think the PD and code enforcement will still have their hands more than full with people that are not in compliance with the ordinance, so therefore they can extend most of their time and resources towards dealing with those real problems, those ninety-nine plants, the people with no homes on the property, the people that are blatantly not considering their neighbors, and the people that really are trying to just grow some for themselves cannot get penalized, so thank you for your consideration.
Hello, I'm Joe Tichner, citizen of Clear Lake. I'm an ex-pothead and I, I'm not in favor of pot smokers too much. I feel they are fiddling around with their personal comfort while Rome is burning. That said, we don't have the right to deny them the use of their bodies, minds, and spirits as they see fit. That is partially our fault, the non-users who stand by and allow insidious brainwashing to warp our children's minds, starting with public education, proceeding with the news bought and paid by huge corporations, continuing with community control ceded to dark and secret institutions of government, bought and paid for by elites and their corporations. We graduate them to a community that does not care about them, has no work for many of them. Much of the work it does have is authoritarian drudgery without living wage. Then we wonder why they turn to drugs and alcohol as a means to feel okay. The voters of California say people have the right to grow medicinal pot, even though many are primarily interested in getting high. They could be addicted to a much more dangerous drug, ethanol, which kills thousands of people every year, the production of which pollutes our beautiful lake and water supply far more than any other single source. I'm talking about fertilized vineyards with large areas of steeply sloped bare mineral earth. It is unfair to crack down on medicinal pot while we do nothing about these other derelictions of our community duty. As council member Bruno Savietier says, "We have existing city laws that could be used to abate the bad behavior associated with large-scale illegal growing." If the city passes prohibition, it is likely to incur hefty legal fees and have the ordinance overturned anyway. If we must have regulations, I favor limiting medicinal pot to six mature plants per adult person and twelve plants per property, grown indoors or out. Policing should be in proportion to all other crimes triggered by public complaints, not by illegal searches or profiling.
Thank you.
Dr. Zabellian, I'm not in favor or against. I have something to advise you, perhaps you're not aware, and more specifically for your attorney. Two weeks ago, the lawsuit which was filed in a federal court is returned back to Lake County with the comment that most of the claims against Lake County are valid. Constitutional Rights Amendment fourteen may have a lot to do with your work. Thank you.
My name is Adelia Leonard, I am a citizen of Clear Lake, California. I am a taxpayer, I am one of your constituents, um, I volunteer in my community, I do charity, I'm not a criminal, I grow for my five-year-old son, I'm a mother of six children, and, uh, my five-year-old happens to have special needs. He has autism, seizures, and because of his seizures is now mentally retarded because of the damage that was done to his brain. We lived at UCSF for the first two and a half years of his life. He was on a liquid diet, we were told he would never walk, he would never talk, he would never be potty-trained, he would never be a normal child. Now he has had a year of high CBD, low THC, marijuana, I grow it organically, I do not use chemicals, and he's doing everything they said he would never do, he's thriving. I believe that you guys support patients, you want them to be able to have access to their medicine, that's why you say, "Go to a dispensary." Dispensaries do not carry high CBD products, uh, they only carry THC products. I found one in San Francisco for two hundred and fifty dollars a week, I could supply my son with medicine. So people that say that they get their medicine from a pharmacy, you have insurance and you don't pay that much a week, it's ignorant. We should be allowed to have our six plants, we wanna follow the law, the people that are breaking the law, let's run them out. This gentleman that talked about his children that are fearful, my family is fearful as well. I am just the only mother up here, but there are fifty other mothers that I supply with oil here in Lake County, they don't come up because they are scared, because people harass us, they threaten us, they say that my son should die because they're tired of hearing my mouth talk about medical marijuana, and I have CPS visits even though I have five doctors from UCSF saying that this is what my child needs. So I am one voice, but I am one of many, so I, please, I urge you, I urge you, please don't do this, please. And if you do, I hope you visit my son at UCSF.
Hi folks, Terry Larson, um, I'm here as a citizen, not representing Lake County Magazine. I passed around to everyone, uh, at the table, a new bill that has been introduced by Cooley, it's called Assembly Bill 266, Medical Marijuana Regulation. This bill covers much of what you wanna try to do individually. I suggest that you follow the lead of other cities who are waiting for the state to set the guidelines and go along with those guidelines instead of completely denying people their medicine. I own a property here in Clear Lake, and I'm selling my property without doing the renovation that I hoped to do, mainly because I just don't think there's gonna be a market for this house, uh, in the near future, and I wanna just get rid of it. We planned a great renovation, we can't grow any plants in that place, it's across the street from the school, so there's no growing there, but I, I feel like it's a lost cause having any investment in Clear Lake. Um, in addition, I represent a group called Patients' Rights Committee, and I wanted to let everybody know, there's a lot of rumors out there that I'm a major drug dealer, and I wanna let everybody know that I supply many, many patients, some in this room, with full extract cannabis oil, which is an oil that is ingested orally, not smoked. This oil cures cancer, it has cured epilepsy, it had, well, not cured, but stopped seizures, and it does many, many other things of which, if you deny me the right to have the, the plants that we need to make this oil, people literally will be dying, okay? Your next-door neighbor, Ms. Mayor Lusteloh, is one of the people that provides me with that medicine at no charge. This oil is given to these people for free so that they can heal themselves, and if that man is not allowed to do that, we're gonna lose a lot of people in this town, you're gonna be going to a lot of funerals.
Hi, um, Michael Horner, I'm, uh, activist who works on this issue all over the western United States, but I live here in Lake County, and most of you know my face, I love Clear Lake and want the best for this community. Um, I, I, Bruno, thank you for taking leadership on this thing, I think you have some very forward-thinking ideas, and I also read the letter that Ms. Lusteloh sent to our friend Mike McGuire, Senator Mike McGuire, um, and I wanna say that echoes the sentiments of communities like ours all over the state. Everybody is, is asking for help. I just wanted to say a few things about the pragmatism of what, what we're doing. You know, the city of Live Oak has enacted a ban that has resulted in an ongoing court battle that has yet to be heard by the, the Supreme Court, so it is still undecided. Um, this ban would take a different path through the appellate court, and when it gets to the Supreme Court, it, they would be compelled to hear this case. Um, there are, there's a lot of legal talent out there that is itching to fight a case like this, and I don't think it's the best thing for our city to take on that legal battle. Um, also, it bears mentioning that Measure N, which is probably the most restrictive thing to date that has been passed prior to this suggestion, um, failed by fifty-four percent in the districts that reported from, uh, Clear Lake. So there's overwhelming support for real cannabis regulation, not an outright ban by the electorate in, in the city of Clear Lake, and I think that, um, should the patients you see here decide to do a referendum on this ordinance, it would take very little effort to gather the signatures necessary and hold a special election, which again, is not the best thing for this city. I think the best thing, my opinion on the best thing for the city, is to consider the compromise that Bruno is, is, is suggesting. Invite some of the stakeholders to the table, invite ASA, invite Normal, invite the PRC, invite the MO Growers Association, have a meeting, and come up with a compromise. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ja Universe, uh, I am not a citizen nor a resident of Clear Lake, I'm a free and wild human being, I own myself. And as I said before, as increasingly complex as the world's problems may seem, the solution remains embarrassingly simple. All the world's problems can be solved in a garden. This is a quote from a brilliant man named Mister, uh, named, uh, sorry, Bill Molison, he was the co-founder of Permaculture. Now, I'd like to say, um, where I left off last time, that your laws, rules, codes, and enforcement mean ecological death and the destruction and deforestation of biomes that ensure life. So not only do I not recognize your laws, your badges to grant extra rights, your permits, your taxes, regulations, codes, and rules, because they aren't real, but more importantly, they are inconsistent with my morals. The planet is real and these politics are fake and fictional. There are no rulers, I am free, independent, beautiful human being, I own myself, I own my labor taxes, death code and enforcement, enforcement is not voluntary, neither is the government. I being free have decided to, have decided to ignore the political scribble and emancipate my mind from mental slavery. So I will not abide, nor will never, sorry, nor will never abide by the rules, and in fact, I will do what is ever necessary to prevent the, to, sorry, wrong piece of paper. Oh, I don't even have the piece. Sorry, uh, I will do what is ever necessary to prevent the biomes of earth being destroyed because these biomes of earth ensure life, the same life beneath our feet that en, sorry, I had no script to go on here, but my point being is, is all these people up here, you know, code enforcement, you have no evidence, you know? If you show up on my property, well, I would ask you for evidence that your laws, your codes, your enforcement apply to me. Provide evidence, provide evidence of jurisdiction, I'm tired of the free pass. Thank you.
I'm Harvey Bateman, uh, I'm a citizen of Clear Lake here, and there's a lot of people in here that know me, that are both for it and against it, but everybody's talking about their rights being taken away. What about my rights? You know, I live in this community too. My, people around me are growing, not six plants, their lots are so crowded and everything that they can't walk through it, other than a path, you know? We tried to get a compromise, it was taken advantage of. We got people coming in, buying lots, they're not living on it, they put out a trailer, a motor home, and they plant. They're not even from this area, they're coming in from out of the area. You know, you talk about wanting your marijuana and everything, that's, much is fine, but don't take advantage of us that don't want it. No, we tried a compromise, we tried. And you're here and stuff saying that we're taking away your rights. My right? I can't go out in my yard and enjoy my yard, which I put thousands and thousands of dollars in, land... dollars in landscaping it, trying to make it nice. The value of my home and stuff, four years ago, was 228,000. Right now, I couldn't sell it for 65,000. And you're taking, we're taking away your rights? Come on. You know, let's, let's work together if anything else.
Time.
You know, okay. Thank you.
Uh-uh, no clapping, no, no, no.
Howdy, everybody. My name is Gio, I, this is my second year here in Lake County. I am a father of five. I have been married before, my first wife passed away of service cancer, mother brain cancer, father colon cancer, long story short, professional cannabis guy. Special respect to Chief. This guy could have done a lot of things a whole bunch of different ways, but he didn't. He let the community police they self, and we didn't do it. We got cartel that I gotta go handle, I gotta go man up, take care of my business. But at the same time, I'm giving them away a million pounds of CBD medication for patients, but I gotta be able to grow it. So let alone do I have to fight over here, I gotta fight over there. I'm not getting any financial gain off of this, I'm getting research and development. So I understand that the tsunami crossed with the Sire Diesel, give it the proper CBD along with Charlotte's Web, there's a study that goes with it. And instead of us having to get into a gangster's mindset of rock it in my grow room, I'm actually looking at Bruno like, "What's up, bud? Is it gonna be zero? Is it gonna be six?" He's like, "Keep it under the fence line, let's be respectful, let's get back to the community, let's watch out for the feds, let's do what we're supposed to do, stop acting so wild." Bruno, you got our support. Chief, thank you for everything. Mayor, ain't nobody gonna touch you, you got our support.
My name is Bruce Camme, I live in Clear Lake. I'm a disabled Vietnam veteran, 100% for PTSD. After Vietnam, I got hit in the head with 400 pounds. I live with headaches 24 hours a day, seven days a week since my age of 20, I am 60. The only quality, I burnt holes in my stomach from aspirin. They want to give me chemical for my PTSD, make me a vegetable, when I could live a quality life, better quality life on medical marijuana. And I can't afford to buy it because the minute it becomes illegal to grow, the price goes up, and it takes away my pain. You know, I fought for my country for a democracy, and all I ask is to let me live at least amount of pain as I can. I can't keep a relationship together, I'm in pain all the time. So, I ask you to understand this, and understand, we vote these people in so we can vote them out.
I'm a resident of Clear Lake for 12 years, and I operate one of the three dispensaries allowed here. And I was looking over your ordinance, and I'm seeing that dispensaries can't grow, people can't grow, nobody can do anything. Well, I know that Jason, and Quincy, and myself, we all take care of a lot of sick people here that are dying, that have cancer, that are disabled, we have a lot of vets that we take care of. I just want you guys to think about that when you're thinking about passing this, because you're going to set us all up to be criminals. And I'm not a criminal, I've never done anything in my life that's wrong, and I don't want to start now. We began because we want to take care of our community and we want to take care of sick people. I'm a sick person. The majority of these people are sick. Let them have their medicine, let's work on a compromise. Let's work with the police department, like Gio said, let's come together and figure out how we can not just have our police department who has a lot on their hands, and I respect each and every one of them, I have law enforcement in my family. Let's just figure it out where everybody's happy. And I'm sorry that values have gone down for other people, but realistically, in another year and a half, it's going to be legal. So, let's figure out and think forward as opposed to backwards. I don't want to stop taking care of people, and I don't want the chief of police to come to our dispensary and say, "You can't do this anymore." I thrive and live to take care of others. So, just think about it, is all I'm saying. I respect each and every one of you, I have nothing bad to say, other than, let's just figure it out together. There's got to be a happy medium and a better compromise. I don't want to be a criminal. I know Jason doesn't, and I know Quincy doesn't. Thank you.
No, 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 no. Hands, hands only.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Robert, and I'm a Vietnam vet, and, well, I've had two other brothers that are Vietnam vets. One's died, one died of throat cancer, one other brother of mine is over in Stockton, and, uh, he's terminal, he's, he's got myeloma. So, uh, the only thing that's helping him besides the, uh, besides, uh, I don't know, it ain't helping him. He's terminal, he's gonna die, they gave him four years, five years ago. And, uh, but he's, he's got, he's got the CBDs and that, that's helping him a lot, you know, it's, it's, it's helping him. He's living, you know, he's, he's, all he wants to do is ride his motorcycle, but, you know, uh, he's still alive. Me, I just had prostate surgery about six, eight months ago. I'll be 70 years old next month, so, you know, I got limited time to be, you know, doing this. I didn't even want to come up here and just talk, 'cause I, I got PTSD, and I don't like big crowds, and this is, you know, I think this is really a bunch of bull that you guys are doing, that nobody really, the only, I mean, you gave this guy, the, the fired chief guy, he, 'cause he puts it on the wall, he puts other sta, he's all prepared, and nobody was prepared for that last meeting. I wasn't prepared, I wasn't even prepared to hear what you guys had to say. You know, it was like, "God, you guys must be kidding me. This can't be happening." I mean, I bought a house, and, and a new house over here about seven, eight years ago, it's not worth what I paid for it, and, but, uh, it'd be nice if you put some money into the roads, you know, I'm, I'm sure that they've got some money for that. I mean, I, I know you're gonna tell me, "It's time." I, I'm just ranting, you know, I'm a Vietnam vet, I just, I always rant, that's why I don't drive, 'cause I rant too much, I get mad.
No, no, no.
Joan Moss. I attended a lot of hearings about this subject, and I read a lot of letters, and I, a lot of people said, "Follow the law." I'm asking you, are you following the rules? Are you following all the laws? Or are you, are you forcing people in Clear Lake and being, forcing them into non-compliance with 215? There are some federal lawyers, and they say the county passed an unconstitutional regulation. Those lawyers are still here, there are many of them. So all I want you to do is read all the rules and follow all the rules. Thank you. That includes Prop 215. Have you, have any of you ever read it? You might have to read it in a claim, if you don't follow it now.
Hello, my name is Lisa, I'm just coming over here, 'cause I'm from Fremont, this is the biggest bull, la-la-la-la, in the world. Honey, if all of us need the medicine, I'm epileptic, born like that, okay? If all of us need the medicine, what are you people going like that for? If you're gonna make the penicillin, fix yourself, why you no more gonna have these people need inside of them? If the children, they fix the medicine for the children, they take it, it's done. If all of us need it, give us our medicine, because look it, if the shop is closed, I'm going to George. If George is not home to give me what I need, sweetheart, I'm gonna go over to Fred, okay? I need my medicine. If you're gonna close the shop, or you're no more gonna let somebody make the field, you're a banana. Because let me tell you, it's been going on for many, many years, I was born like this. There, you guys are no more the first time that has ever told somebody, "You no more can do like that." Okay? So don't get it inside of your head like that, "Oh, well, we no more gonna go like this." I'm not trying to be inside of somebody to be arrested. I'm just telling you, sweetheart, this is no more the first time, okay, lady, man, whoever, whatever. I'm sorry, I'm just here visiting, okay? I'm just telling you like that, okay? I don't mean to be mean, okay, sweetheart?
Hi, my name is Joel Moore. I've been here about 20 years in Lake County, I've been in Clear Lake for about the last 15. I, most of you know me, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail about who I am and what kind of stuff I've done. If you don't know me, ask the ones that do know me, they'll tell you who I am. I'm not a criminal. Five years ago, I was diagnosed with inoperable lung cancer. It's come back twice, so three times, I've had to fight it back. The last two times, I have survived it because of cannabis oil. If I cannot grow it, I will die, and if I would die, I will come back and haunt every one of you.
Remember the rules, please.
Hi, my name's Pete Gascoigne, I've lived here since 1969. I don't use marijuana myself, I don't drink, I don't do drugs. I thought I was gonna, I thought I knew what I was gonna say when I got healthy and sick. Thank you. Here, but after listening to these people, I am dead-set against recreational drugs, recreational marijuana. The people here that need it, I don't know how in God's name you can refuse to let them have three plants, four plants, five plants. I condemn the growers, they're the ones that have, I think, made this city what it is now, the ones that are making it for money. But please, don't let these people just not get their medicine. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jerry Spitler. I helped create the ordinance that you're trying to wash away, and during the creation of that ordinance, I questioned our city manager and the attorney at that time. I said, "Shouldn't we have an attorney helping us create this ordinance that specializes in marijuana?" And I was quieted by the attorney when she snapped my head off and insisted that she was a specialist, and Joan, I know you remember that. She said she specialized, they had a specialist at their firm, and she knew exactly what she was doing. So you can imagine the embarrassment and how appalled I was to see illegal gigantic grows all over my neighborhoods. I've lived in my city for 30 years, I care about this city, I'm vested in this city, I've owned and operated a business in this city for 20 years, and it was disgusting to me to see illegal grows all over my neighborhoods. But I would never deny a patient the right to grow their six plants, and that's why we created the ordinance in the first place. So I would like to see, I would like to see this council go back, fix what's broken, not open another can of worms and entangle themselves in lawsuits and another ordinance that they have to work the bugs out of. Start from where you're at, fix what's broken so our department can enforce it, and limit these things to six plants. It was absolutely ridiculous what went on last year. And, and I felt upset about it as a citizen, knowing that 59% of our income goes for the police department, and I didn't understand what was wrong, being that I was told by our city manager and the attorney that they knew what they were doing. And then, it comes back to me, "Well, I guess they didn't, it's not enforceable." Fix what's broken, don't start over. Take the work that's already been done, learn from that, and make it right so these people can grow their medicine. I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Did you see me pick up the mic? It was coming.
How you guys doing? My name's Dan Pearson, and I'm a resident here in Clear Lake. A lot of you people out here know me, I've lived here a long time, I've been in Lake County almost all my life. But what a lot of you guys don't know is that when I hurt my back working from Walmart, they put me on a lot of pain medication, and pain medication took a toll on my brain. I threatened to kill my wife, I threatened to kill my mom, I threatened to kill myself. This was really hard for me because I don't like remembering myself that way. I dabbled in it when I was a kid and in high school, I smoked it, hell yeah, who didn't? Right? But now, I have a new respect for it. I used to have convulsions in my bed, I would kick my wife so hard I'd leave bruises on her legs from the convulsions in my back. I've had nine back surgeries. My wife just got done fighting cancer, three times she had surgery because doctors kept screwing up and not getting it all out of her throat. She had thyroid cancer. They went to give her pain medicine, so I gave her some of mine, but I ran out because I was only allowed to grow six. I had to have my medicine. What's she gonna do for hers? Is it fair to you all? It's not fair to me, I don't think it's fair to anybody else.
My name's Jason Jones, I'm, keep this short and sweet, I'm the president of D&amp;M Compassion Center on Olympus Drive. Back in 2011, I had started a compassion program that over, had over 200 members that are able to come into the dispensary each month and get a free allotment of medicine. Lake, Lake County decided to start implementing a lot of ordinance and over-regulating. This program now has dwindled down from over 200 now to 25 members that are here inside of the city of Clear Lake. With you guys now getting ready to implement a zero tolerance of grows, those 25 people are now gonna have to find a new place to go get medicine. And with that, I ask that you really look over Bruno's ordinance or what he's trying to have adopted or implemented, that will still allow those sick and needy people to be able to provide for themselves at least a quarter to half of the year. And then, I know Liz and Quincy and myself, with us contributing too, we can try to sustain these people and help out, 'cause that's what we're supposed to be in this for as a community, is to help one another and look out for each other. Again, by banning and preventing, it's really gonna create a ripple effect throughout the whole community, not just with the sick, but the businesses and other things in the community as well, that, kind of, these programs help. Again, the sick, if they have that money freed up, not having to come to the dispensaries and buy their medicine, now they have money to go to the local coffee shops or go to the fishing place and buy the tackle and things. You know, those money stayed freed up for luxury things in the community, and we don't want this community to end up like Upper Lake, you know, as a ghost town because it's dried up and everybody's moved on. I'm not going nowhere, I'm sure most of these people aren't going anywhere, so let's all get on the same page and work together and get these things on. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Ryan Oltch, and I'm a recent resident here in Clear Lake. I'd like to speak a little bit about my personal experience with medical marijuana. 16 years ago, at the age of 24, I was diagnosed with multiple sclerosis. Living with MS has changed my daily life dramatically, and one of the main symptoms I have is muscle weakness in my legs and difficulty walking. I've tried all of the medical routes to go, multiple prescription medications, daily injection medications, steroid treatments, and nothing has really worked for me in the same way that a natural approach with medical marijuana and a very strict, healthy diet. Medical marijuana really provides genuine relief for my symptoms. The anti-inflammatory properties, I feel, have kept me from having any more of what's called exacerbation with my MS, it's kept me level, not getting any worse. The muscle-relaxing properties of it actually help with my walking, it makes a great deal of difference in how fast I'm able to walk, or how long, how far. It makes a great deal of difference in how fast I'm able to walk or how long, how far. Medical marijuana also really helps my everyday quality of life. It helps me with sleeping. It helps as with the battle of depression and just overall, like I say, my quality of life. Also, one of the very great benefits for me is pain management. I have a lot of pain due to the way that I walk and carrying my crutch and the way that I move. And it very much helps with pain. So a zero tolerance policy would really only serve to criminalize people like myself or me, that I really only want personal medication to grow for myself. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Matt Reiman. I moved to Clear Lake with my family about seven months ago, not for the intentions to grow, but I do use medical marijuana. I personally don't grow. But to take away the rights of the people to grow is not right. If you take away the rights of the people to grow, I have to go for either more expensive medication or go without. The true problem in this town is methamphetamine. I live on walnut. Then three blocks from my house, I could take you to dozens of abandoned houses that are squatted by tweakers, used as meth labs. Take my kids to Red Bud Park every day. I find used syringes laying in the damn park. Who's cleaning this up? I don't see joint roaches. I don't see broken pipes. I don't see discarded marijuana plants. I see methamphetamine everywhere, and no one has the balls to tackle it right now. So why don't you focus on that? Let's go with Councilman Bruno. He seems to be the most reasonable man up here. And I think we need to take a serious look at the methamphetamine. That is what's causing the violent crime? That's what's causing the crops to get ripped off that you're complaining about? It's not other growers doing it. Sick people can't get out of bed and go steal weed plants. People on methamphetamine all damn night though can sure go in at three in the morning and steal it. So let's just focus on the town's real problem and leave sick people alone. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Hugh Watt. I own Motivated Clothing and DDC, and I work with numerous people with what I do. I mean, we give ten percent to cancer. We do all kinds of things. And you guys need to open your eyes. You guys are here to work for us. You guys are here to be here for us. And look at all these people here right now. All these people are here because they need you. They need you to actually look at them and see that they need you to help them in this matter. Right now, you guys are attacking them instead of attacking big growers. If that's your problem, attack them. Don't attack these people, have them spend thousands of dollars to just take care of themselves. What you're doing is wrong. This is not Rome. This is not the old days. This is the future. Get with it. Otherwise, this place is gonna die away. And so will all these people, and I beyond all of you.
What I'm gonna say is gonna only take one minute, hopefully. My name is Pamela Pope, and I've been here now for about, oh, eight years. I've been very sick. I just was cured from liver disease. But I've also fallen. I can't take pain medication. It doesn't work. It makes me sick. It also gives me seizures. Cannabis is the only thing I can take. If I didn't have that, I would kill myself, literally. That's how bad I feel. You take this away from the people, you may have a whole bunch more than me coming right behind me, you know? And another thing, I also worked with law enforcement for a while. And if you take this from the people, the clubs, the growers, I understand there's gonna be some problems. Well, I guess I'm gonna talk a little longer. But anyway, if you take this away from the people, this is gonna bring in more trouble. You're gonna have the people coming in from the Bay Area. You think you got problems now? You're really gonna have some problems. You know, so I, I know you're reasonable people, and I hope that you can, you know, work with, work with the people here in Lake County. I myself am selling and leaving because I need, I need more help, and I can't get it here. But please, work with the people. You know, I'm sure we can do that. Thank you.
For those who don't know me, my name is Peter Schiffman. I am a property owner in Clear Lake. I have, was not planning on speaking tonight, but there's two, one issue that has not been addressed yet, and I'll get to that in a second. For those who do know me, know that I've never smoked marijuana, cannabis, pot in my life. I've never taken any illegal drugs in my life. Unfortunately, I've taken a lot of prescription drugs in my life, which is not very conducive to my body. I have a bad reaction to them. Six months ago, I was diagnosed with sports-related epilepsy. Too many hits in the head. I am on over three thousand milligrams of drugs right now to control seizures. It doesn't work. My wife, and I gotta say, there are a lot more people in this room, in this city, that have a lot worse illnesses than I'll ever have in my life. What I have is an inconvenience. But by taking edibles, I'm talking about CBDs, not THC. I hate getting high. I don't drink very much. I don't like being out of control. But the CBD cookies and brownies, when I'm having a seizure, my wife feeds it to me, and I'm out and back in my normal life within ten minutes. Before that, it would take me anywhere from an hour to a day to get back to normal. That's just a personal note. One thing that's not been addressed, I watched on Channel Eight two weeks ago when you had your council meeting, and you gave direction to staff to put up an ordinance of a no-grow I'm not the smartest guy on the block sometimes, but I can see a dog and pony show when I see it. This was such a setup of having the gentleman from the, representing the fire department. He had Chief Thier. I'm already done? Okay. Okay. My point here is the credibility of the people, to me, we're lacking, especially the finance gentleman. Multiple ways to come up with, I'll be quick. There's multiple ways to come up with a cost allegation. Chief, never mind.
Go ahead, laugh, Ed. Yeah, I know. My name is Ron Strobridge. Ed Roby can give you a background if you want on who I am and how I do things or whatever. I wasn't gonna speak here because the last time I spoke, I got myself involved in three years of nonsense in Hidden Valley. I've been a resident of Clear Lake for about ten years now. My property value, I've lost about a half million dollars in equity so far, but that's because of Wall Street, not marijuana. I would like to ask you people if you have done as elected officials due diligence on this entire thing. After all, the entire United States of America is going through processes with all of this. What I will tell you is that I know that this police department, having worked for ten years as a metropolitan cop myself, is overburdened, underpaid, and undersupervised. So to allege or imply that somehow they're responsible for these problems is wrong. Okay? At the same time, when I first, six years ago, when my wife and I would go out and work through neighborhoods here and so forth, we'd see marijuana trees growing on roofs, for crying out loud. I couldn't believe what I was seeing. Last year, the city council took a vote to implement something that allowed for a process to kind of pull these things down and also to allow a lot of the situations to be seen, observed, allow them not to, to attack responsible citizens, but spend their time on other things. I do not see how in a few weeks or months since you were elected, that you could have done the true due diligence necessary. I grew up in this, in this town, my family, five generations, Lake County, okay? I hate to see this city looking like it does now after what I remember as a child. It has gotten better. Work with it, please. Don't start a war.
Hi, I'm Vince Metzger, local businessman, property owner. I know most of you. I've worked for, with some of you. I voted for most of you. I know a lot of people in the audience. Been here for almost thirty years. I'm the victim of many crimes, having nothing to do with marijuana, by the way. And I submitted a paper that I'm gonna read, council members all have. I just wanna do this for the benefit of the audience, if you don't mind. Called Taking Care of Business. Now is the time for Clear Lake to take control of its own future. Marijuana is on course to be legalized throughout the nation. The arguments are over, and there are no stopping the liberalization of pot as both a medicinal and recreational substance and the number-one agricultural crop in the United States. What can a little town like Clear Lake do in response to this new industry? We could bury our heads and wait for state and federal regulations, which could take years. We could fight it and insist that enjoying the effects of cannabis are against the grain of morality and health as we indulge in alcohol, nicotine, and prescription drugs. We could pretend it doesn't exist and just take what comes down into our community, finally banning it outright because we are not capable of taking care of business. Or we can accept the responsibility of regulating our own lives in response to a new product that is sweeping, with sweeping influences. As a local business owner, I'm required to have a business license, franchise tax number, IRS account, and meet all property and operational standards that would befuddle the average person. I pay into tax accounts that support the city, county, state, and nation. And I support local activity.
Time, Vince. Sorry, Vince. We did receive your letter. Thank you.
Can I finish it?
No, two minutes.
Well, we should make it so that people can operate.
We understand. Thank you.
Mike Smith, Clear Lake City resident. Bear with me, I don't do public speaking. I don't even, I don't even smoke or use marijuana. Jobs won't even let me. My wife does, though. She's, she's had a brain aneurysm burst, heart attacks, seizures, strokes, month and a half in the hospital, open skull surgery. She's got stents placed in her brain, her skull's held together by metal. She's just been part of a trial for an Elvis stint. She can't take, she, she suffers from chronic daily migraines. She cannot take, you know, excedrum migraine or anything you go buy at the store. It'll kill her. Her blood is kept at a certain level. Taking away her ability to grow is forcing her out. She's gonna have to go somewhere else because she has to have that. She's permanently disabled at thirty-four. This happened four years ago, so thirty years old, she was disabled. She doesn't want, she doesn't want this, but she wants to be able to grow her six plants in her backyard. You know? Don't, don't force a zero grow. I mean, all I can say is, you know, I'm hoping I'm not speaking to deaf ears. I really hope.
Jaw Universe? You've already spoke.
Well.
One time.
I, I would like to, I would like to inform the people that...
So we are going to adjourn to a recess. Break, recess?
Ruffraff.
You did everything. You deserve everything.
You get my message? Yourself? By the way, you ordered my tires. Well, maybe it's really... I gotta be on the road by ten thirty.
So is this gonna be going on tonight?
I hope, I hope the zero passes. I mean, I was talking about there, and they said that if people didn't get it for this morning, the people would get it. It's not doing anything. The glamour, I think, might, you know, might contribute by the same time, but it's also a lot of help outside.
No kidding? Yeah, we spotted her when we were on the road.
No kidding. But it's Saturday.
Yeah, we can, we can start at noon, so then kind of stagger back down.
Good idea, Donna.
Was it, was it a bottle?
Perhaps.
Something tall, bike guy.
Yeah, we'll get paid next week.
And he said, this mayor, you're safe, and we got your back or something. I was like, apparently you must be a king.
If everyone could please take your seats, we're gonna return to the meeting. Thank you.
I'll give you a cue. I'll give you a clue. Okay, quiet, so we can continue with our public comment portion. Okay. So quiet, so we can continue with the public comment. Again, raise of hands if you show support. Please, no clapping, no shouting, no interrupting, courteous to the speaker, just like before we took our break. Thank you, and you may begin.
My name is Danielle Roberts. I have an unknown seizure condition. As some of you up there know, last year, I actually had a seizure in front of seizure hall during a first-grade field trip. I was actually on seizure medications. I've come to the conclusion that they make my life unlivable. The CBDs, on the other hand, make it to where I can safely take care of my daughter. I am begging you guys to consider this. It is not fair to those of us with medical conditions that have no other options. Some of us have other options, and some of us don't. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bridget Ornalis, and I've been living in Clear Lake for about eight years. And we are all patients, not criminals. Don't make us criminals.
Hi, my name's Amy Landrum. I just wanted to point out that currently, twenty-three states, including the District of Columbia, have currently, they currently have laws that are legalizing marijuana in some form. This map right here shows us. Light green is the legal for recreational use. The dark green is for the medical-approved usage. District of Columbia voters are also recently overwhelmingly approved a ballot initiative legalizing recreational-purpose marijuana that will be subject to congressional review. Um, District of Columbia voters are also recently overwhelmingly approved a ballot initiative legalizing recreational purpose marijuana that will be subject to congressional review. Um, I also just wanna remind everybody about prohibition and what that did for us. Um, it created, um, more criminal activity, because you had gangsters that were coming in, and they were, they were the ones that were doing the alcohol and whatnot, and doing the runs for that. Um, people didn't have money to take home to take care of their children, because they were spending it all on the illegal, um, alcohol. Um, there's, there's just a lot of points. If you guys wanna compare marijuana, look at the prohibition. We abolished prohibition because of all the risks, all the strain it put on us as a nation.
Uh, my name is Christie Dillon. I have been a resident of Lake County, mainly Clearlake, for almost eight years. Um, I know quite a few of you personally, actually. Um, I've done business at your place of business. I went to school with Bruno, thank you, Bruno. Um, I voted for most of you, and I am coming to you as a representative of one of the collectives. I'm also coming to you as a representative as quite a few of the patients of said collective. The majority of our patients are veterans. These are the men and women that have fought for your freedom. And if you deny their freedom to get their safe access to their own medication, you're basically negating everything that they sacrificed, everything that their families sacrificed for our safety. These patients, myself included, we need our medicine. I can't take narcotics. I can't take muscle relaxers, I can't take anti-seizure medication for my muscles. It doesn't work, or else I wouldn't be able to stand here and speak with clarity to you. Do not do this to our community. Not only are you denying yourself, but you're denying all of us. And that's not fair. We did get you in here, and like someone said before, we have no problem taking you out.
Good evening, my name is Mitch Markowitz, and I've been a homeowner in Clearlake since nineteen eighty-seven. Um, I know some of you because we've worked together, some of you I've taught. Um, the speaker who, who addressed you before I did, used the word "community," and I'd like to talk about community. I believe that there are over thirteen thousand people in our community, and when I think about community, I think of what's good for the, the great majority of people who live here, and what do we want for the greater good? And when I see all the, the grows we have here in town, I wonder how all this cultivation of, whether it's medicine or recreational marijuana, benefits our community. How do these grows make this a better place for all of us to live in? And I just don't see it. I don't see that this community has become a better place. Remember, I've been here since nineteen eighty-seven. I don't see that this community has become a better place for the great majority of its citizens. And I'm wondering if this communicate, uh, this community is going to deteriorate even further than it has, because I've seen deterioration here. And I'm wondering, too, um, what kind of image we want for our community? If we want to be known as the medical marijuana capital of Northern California, is-
Yeah!
Personally, yeah, I, I have no objections to medical marijuana, I have no objections to recreational use of marijuana. I just don't want six grows on my street. I think it's rather excessive.
Time.
And then for those people, okay, time.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Heather Fisher. I'm a, a homeowner here in Clearlake, and I've been in here since nineteen seventy-six. Um, just wanted to mention that one of the things that I've noticed is that, uh, well, and the one, my biggest thing is, I am not against people who need it. I appreciate that physically, that there are a lot of people who do need this. Um, my objection is to having it affect those who don't. And it's not a matter of them using it, it's a matter of the growth, and the, the smells, the influences, the do, the guard dogs, the traffic in the middle of the nights that happen on these properties that other people don't always notice. Um, other communities have banned it. Now, if, if the county has banned it, now that means it's being concentrated in our city, and that's a dangerous position. Uh, other communities such as Colorado have, uh, given it legal advi, or allowance, but even there, the dispensaries are the only ones that are allowed to grow. They, the people who use it and need it are not allowed to grow.
That's true.
So, if, what happens then is we're, uh, if we were to, uh, can go ahead and continue to, to take the same position that the county has taken, and eliminate something right now, so that we're not the ones who are proposing the new changes, then if one, the country does come to an agreement on what needs to be changed and how to do it, they will have already had the ability to put those things in place, so that we are not the ones who are the testers. And that would be, because otherwise, I see that you guys are gonna just have a really big problem. I'm done.
Now's her time, and we will time. Thank you, we're doing it.
Dave Hughes, uh, forty-year resident of Clearlake. And before I start, before you start timing me, I thought it would be appropriate to have a petition, and so I, I developed this maybe a week ago, passed it out to a few friends, and then I spent maybe twenty minutes, thirty minutes gathering signatures. So, I have a hundred and twenty, about a hundred and twenty-five signatures here, and then there was a Facebook petition that got, I think, forty-six. So, there, and this is to support no growing in the city of Clearlake. So, I'd like to hand this to the city council. Well, can you start it over? I, I, as I mentioned, I've been here forty years, and I can't believe-
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't even know what to say. Um, I've lived here forty years, and last year to me seemed like a new low in our community. We, I, I fought the ordinance when you passed it, and it was passed, and we said, "Come to Clearlake and grow," and they came. And they came in numbers. I liked what Harvey said, "What about my rights?" The property next to me was a grow. I had to put up with it. My house was broken into by people looking for marijuana. I, I talked to Sheriff Almond in Mendocino County. His words to me were, "It's not working. It's not working in Mendocino County." And we had a realtor trying to change, uh, the, asked the county to change to allow more zones.
Stop interrupting, or we will quit. I'm not gonna play. Stop. Stop. If you don't like what's being said, no one interrupted you, stop. This is the last warning of the meeting, stop.
The biggest problem is voluntary compliance isn't there. And that's what we really need to make it work. I'm not disputing the fact that it has medicinal uses. I'm not disputing that at all. What I'm disputing is where it's grown. And it doesn't belong being grown in a suburban community on a fifty-by-hundred lot. It doesn't. It doesn't belong on an acre.
That is time.
Good evening, my name is Dave Anzoldua. Live in Clearlake, been here fifteen years. I, myself, am a nineteen ninety-one Desert Storm veteran. I suffer from PTSD and cancer, Hodgkin's disease, under my left, my left arm. We need due diligence. We need to go back and understand what we originally formatted for the cultivation. We don't need what we presently have. Sick patients are at hand. We need to be able to go back and understand exactly what Proposition 215, exactly, exactly what it is. It allows six plants per person, per parcel. We need to understand exactly what is at hand here. You're subjecting people's lives, you're subjecting my life. I ask you, I humbly plead with you. You, ma'am, as Madam Mayor, know me personally. I'm sorry, you do. But anyway, that's beside the point. I ask you, and I plead with you, as this council, to go back and look at that due diligence that you originally proposed and put into effect, and put it back into effect the way that it is supposed to. Parts of it need to be ratified, I understand. But I'm only here as a citizen, and as a patient, that needs the medical marijuana for my own personal use. I grow it, if it's too much, stuff like that, at the dispensary, stuff like that, I grow it. But I keep within the limits. The people that are on the lots and stuff like that, with their RVs and stuff like that, go after them. They're your problem, not us. I am a sick patient, and I will let you go with that.
Time, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lana Getz, and I've lived in Lake County thirty years. I've been in the avenues for nine years, and it's horrible. I do not feel safe, my grandchildren are not safe, there has been gunfire. In a half a lot, there's a hundred plants that are over the roof of these people's house. My grandchildren go to school smelling like marijuana, my house smells like it. I understand it helps for a lot of medical reasons, but my grandchildren come first, and it is not safe. I can't walk my dogs on a leash without other animals coming out from these houses that have all the plants. And if it was just for medical use, it's one thing, but it's not. A hundred plants on a half a lot at my front room window is ridiculous, and I shouldn't have to live like that. I shouldn't have to worry about, next time there's gunfire from a bad drug deal, is it gonna be my granddaughter that's getting shot? So, do I do pull a butt off and shove it in the bullet wound? It's, it's not fair. There's no six pl, I, I, there's no six plants in the avenue, it's a hundred, it's seventy-five. They're taller than the ro, so the houses. And if it was your house that got shot at, it'd be different. Or when they're going through our yards.
Direct up.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
It's just, it, it's hard. It's hard to show sympathy when August and October, walking anywhere in my area is not safe. I have paid taxes here, and I have been here, I've raised a son here, and now three grandchildren. And it's not safe, it hasn't gotten better. So, thank you.
Hi, Regina Sanders, I've been a resident here for, um, twenty years now, and I believe when we first started the meeting, we did the pledge allegiance, and the last sentence of that is, "And justice for all." So, where is our justice? Where is our right to grow our medicine? I have a child, they'd rather put him on OxyContin's for his injury, instead of letting him eat cannabis. So, you tell me, would you like your child addicted to narcotics? My aunt also has MS, she can't get out of bed, but when she uses the tincture, she's able to walk, she's able to function. So, I just ask of you guys, please, do not take our right to grow our medication.
Good evening, Pete Lustelow, um, citizen of Clearlake, homeowner in Clearlake, I've been here since nineteen seventy-nine, and I wanted to say that sick lives do matter, healthy lives matter. Um, we all have rights to live and choose the way we wanna live our lives, as long as it doesn't infringe on somebody else. Unfortunately, what's happened, I think, with the, uh, medical marijuana issue, is that it is, even if it's being grown medically, infringing on other people. Um, six plants, there's no way that I have seen to control the odor, to keep it just in that lot without it going on to other parcels and affecting people. Um, alarms that go off all hours of the night, um, the smells, like I said, um, what it's doing to the neighborhoods. And, um, likewise, like I said, it would be the same for us i- if I decided that, you know, I was a meat eater, I was gonna have six cows in my backyard. You know, the noise, the smell, it's not fair for the people that live around me. So, take that into consideration when you guys are, are doing this, that i- it's, it's what is best for the whole community as a whole, um, healthy and sick. Thank you.
Hi, how y'all doing? My name is Donald Ferris, um, I've been here about twenty years. My son's gone to school here. Um, I help in the community all I can, I serve people food, I give, you know what? Enough about me. This is about sick people, this is about people that grow cannabis. Some of it's outrageous, some of it's not. Now, the, um, the ordinance is out there on 215 for us to have six plants. I don't personally grow, I don't have room for it, I don't have land for it, but if I did, I would, I would want to know that I could. I would want to know, I also, I, one more thing, I got ran over in nineteen ninety, and I can't, I can't take medicine now because of my stomach and my kidneys and stuff like that, and I've got family out here that, that can back this up. And yes, I do, I use cannabis, and it's a lot better for me. It doesn't destroy my insides, it doesn't put holes in my stomach, it doesn't give me acid reflux. If it, if the roles were turned, and you people were asking us for something, who are we to say that you can't have it? Six plants is one thing. For us to have our, our medicine, thank you, for us to have our medicine and stuff, I'm not gonna hurt you, um, and please don't hurt us, just let us have our freedom. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jim Varoski, I'm a property owner here in Clearlake. Um, I think we all have many important issues here that need to be addressed, but they're not gonna go away by legislating laws that will not represent the people. This is a very important issue that has a lot of effects for all of us. There are many ways and many alternatives to, uh, apply all these solutions. Um, there's appropriate places to grow, there's not appropriate places to grow. There's places that will, uh, be safe and sound for patients to grow, and there's places that won't be, that infringes on the rights of the homeowners. But there is a common ground here that we're all gonna need to find, and we won't find it right tonight, but we need to start looking a lot deeper, because just by drafting ordinances that turn regular patients into criminals is really not gonna solve anything, it's gonna create a lot more problems. There's many counties that have addressed all of these issues, and you need to do a lot of research, Santa Cruz County, uh, there, I could go through a whole list of counties that have become, that have addressed this issue, and come up with some very good solutions that address the needs of homeowners, private piece of people, and patients. This is not gonna go away, this is a major tide that has come in, and for us to just bury our heads in the sand is a mistake. This will, many things are gonna happen right now, we're at the pivotal point in history, and we need to start standing up and doing the right thing for our people, and the right thing for all of us. My family comes from a, a family of law enforcement, my father's a judge, my uncle is a probation officer who just happened to, uh, have a bad bit with cancer. He was not the one to say, "Well, I'm gonna start, uh, applying medic, uh, cancer to my therapy." And, uh, chemotherapy and, or, aside from other medications I was taking, made it, so he was unable to even talk with his family for the last six months of his life. Uh, medical marijuana-
Understand what we originally formatted for the cultivation. We don't need what we presently have. Sick patients are at hand. We need to be able to go back and understand exactly what Proposition 215, exactly, exactly what it is. It allows six plants per person, per parcel. We need to understand exactly what is at hand here. You're subjecting people's lives. You're subjecting my life. I ask you, I humbly plead with you. You, ma'am, as Madam Mayor, know me personally. I'm sorry, you do. But anyway, that's beside the point. I ask you, and I plead with you, as this council, to go back and look at that due diligence that you originally proposed and put into effect, and put it back into effect the way that it is supposed to. Parts of it need to be ratified, I understand. But I'm only here as a citizen and as a patient that needs the medical marijuana for my own personal use. I grow it. If it's too much, stuff like that, at the dispensary, stuff like that, I grow it. But I keep within the limits. The people that are on the lots and stuff like that with their RVs and stuff like that, go after them. They're your problem, not us. I am a sick patient, and I will let you go with that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lana Getz, and I've lived in Lake County thirty years. I've been in the avenues for nine years, and it's horrible. I do not feel safe. My grandchildren are not safe. There has been gunfire in a half a lot. There's a hundred plants that are over the roof of these people's house. My grandchildren go to school smelling like marijuana. My house smells like it. I understand it helps for a lot of medical reasons, but my grandchildren come first, and it is not safe. I can't walk my dogs on a leash without other animals coming out from these houses that have all the plants. And if it was just for medical use, it's one thing, but it's not. A hundred plants on a half a lot at my front room window is ridiculous, and I shouldn't have to live like that. I shouldn't have to worry about next time there's gunfire from a bad drug deal, is it going to be my granddaughter that's getting shot? So do I do pull a butt off and shove it in the bullet wound? It's, it's not fair. There's no six, I, there's no six plants in the avenue. It's a hundred, it's seventy-five. They're taller than the rest of the houses. And if it was your house that got shot at, it'd be different. Or when they're going through our yards.
Direct up.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
It's just, it, it's hard. It's hard to show sympathy when August and October, walking anywhere in my area is not safe. I have paid taxes here, and I have been here, I've raised a son here, and now three grandchildren. And it's not safe. It hasn't gotten better. Thank you.
Hi, Regina Sanders. I've been a resident here for twenty years now, and I believe when we first started the meeting, we did the pledge allegiance, and the last sentence of that is "and justice for all." So where is our justice? Where is our right to grow our medicine? I have a child. They'd rather put him on OxyContin's for his injury instead of letting him eat cannabis. So you tell me, would you like your child addicted to narcotics? My aunt also has MS. She can't get out of bed, but when she uses the tincture, she's able to walk, she's able to function. So I just ask of you guys, please, do not take our right to grow our medication.
Good evening. Pete Lustelow, citizen of Clear Lake, homeowner in Clear Lake. I've been here since nineteen seventy-nine, and I wanted to say that sick lives do matter. Healthy lives matter. We all have rights to live and choose the way we want to live our lives, as long as it doesn't infringe on somebody else. Unfortunately, what's happened, I think, with the medical marijuana issue is that it is, even if it's being grown medically, infringing on other people. Six plants, there's no way that I have seen to control the odor, to keep it just in that lot without it going on to other parcels and affecting people. Alarms that go off all hours of the night. The smells, like I said, what it's doing to the neighborhoods. And likewise, like I said, it would be the same for us if I decided that, you know, I was a meat eater, I was going to have six cows in my backyard. You know, the noise, the smell is not fair for the people that live around me. So take that into consideration when you guys are, are doing this, that it's, it's what is best for the whole community as a whole, healthy and sick.
Hi, how y'all doing? My name is Donald Ferris. I've been here about twenty years. My son's gone to school here. I help in the community all I can. I serve people food. I give, you know what? Enough about me. This is about sick people. This is about people that grow cannabis. Some of it's outrageous, some of it's not. Now, the, um, the ordinance is out there on 215 for us to have six plants. I don't personally grow. I don't have room for it. I don't have land for it. But if I did, I would, I would want to know that I could. I would want to know, I also, I, one more thing. I got ran over in nineteen ninety, and I can't, I can't take medicine now because of my stomach and my kidneys and stuff like that, and I've got family out here that, that can back this up. And yes, I do, I use cannabis, and it's a lot better for me. It doesn't destroy my insides. It doesn't put holes in my stomach. It doesn't give me acid reflux. If it, if the roles were turned, and you people were asking us for something, who are we to say that you can't have it? Six plants is one thing. For us to have our, our medicine, thank you, for us to have our medicine and stuff, I'm not going to hurt you, and please don't hurt us, just let us have our freedom.
Good evening. My name is Jim Vorelsky. I'm a property owner here in Clear Lake. I think we all have many important issues here that need to be addressed, but they're not going to go away by legislating laws that will not represent the people. This is a very important issue that has a lot of effects for all of us. There are many ways and many alternatives to apply all these solutions. There's appropriate places to grow, there's not appropriate places to grow. There's places that will be safe and sound for patients to grow, and there's places that won't be, that infringes on the rights of the homeowners. But there is a common ground here that we're all going to need to find, and we won't find it right tonight, but we need to start looking a lot deeper, because just by drafting ordinances that turn regular patients into criminals is really not going to solve anything. It's going to create a lot more problems. There's many counties that have addressed all of these issues, and you need to do a lot of research. Santa Cruz County, there, I could go through a whole list of counties that have become, that have addressed this issue and come up with some very good solutions that address the needs of homeowners, private people, and patients. This is not going to go away. This is a major tide that has come in, and for us to just bury our heads in the sand is a mistake. This will, many things are going to happen right now. We're at the pivotal point in history, and we need to start standing up and doing the right thing for our people and the right thing for all of us. My family comes from a, a family of law enforcement. My father's a judge. My uncle is a probation officer who just happened to have a bad bit with cancer. He was not the one to say, well, I'm going to start applying medic, uh, cancer to my therapy. And chemotherapy and aside from other medications that he was taking made it so he was unable to even talk with his family for the last six months of his life. Medical marijuana made it possible for him to be able to have a peaceful last six months. We, there's so much science that supports it day by day. You guys need to do your research, due diligence, and realize that there's a lot of great applications of this, and there's a perfect place. There's community gardens, there's places that should not be allowed to grow, but there are places that do need to be allowed to grow, and we cannot make criminals out of patients.
Time.
Please, thank you for your consideration, and let's work on this together, please.
Hi. My name is Sandra Wattenberger. I suffer from traumatic stress disorder from being sexually and mentally and physically abused by a stepfather for twelve years. I ran away from home when I was seventeen. But anyway, on top of that, we had a house with toxic mold. It destroyed my immune system. I'm on pretty regimented diets, and recently I had a total knee replacement, and I forgot to tell the hospital that I was allergic to the bleach, and I got eyes all over my bum. But I get anxiety attacks really bad, and the cannabis helps. Recently, my hands broke out, and people that know me know that it was like someone just taking razor, just cut my hands. And my friend Melissa made me a cannabis tincture, and, uh, because I have a prescription of steroids, but I've got so much liver damage from all the steroids they had me on from all the allergies and, oh, all that. So the tincture, it worked, no steroids. But I do agree immensely, I can't stand the sight of these stinking grows, and those are the people that are making it bad for the rest of us, because what we do is so totally different. We spend a fortune alone in just the, it's all organic. You know, it's not like something you go sell to somebody on the street or something. It's not it. And there's edibles that we participate in the market once in a while, and we see people that come in that, you know, used to be, all I can say is, you think you got a bad, look around you. Why, you know, there's a lot worse.
Time, sorry, time, thank you.
But anyway, I, I hope it can be worked out so that medically people...
Have to stop you.
Good evening, council members and staff and guests. I'm Akila Elamin Bakit. I neither grow nor use marijuana. I'm sure I have a couple of legitimate reasons if I needed to get a script from my doctor. I've had migraines for over fifty years, most of my life, and I have carpal tunnel in both hands. However, my next door neighbor does grow marijuana, or her son does, and he has done so for the past three or four years. I am not offended by the marijuana that the young man grows, because I never smell it. His mother told me that he was going to start growing it a few years ago and asked me if I would object. I said, as long as I don't smell it, it doesn't cause any problems, I'm okay with it. And the only reason that I verify that he grows it is because I can see it from my bathroom window. So the question I'd like to pose to you all, or for you to consider, is if my neighbor's son can grow marijuana, and I see about six plants every year, and I don't smell it, isn't there a way that you all can instruct people on what kind of plants to grow that don't smell?
Members of the city council, thank you for having us all here so we could discuss this and figure out a way to all work together and work these issues out. Like the gentleman said before me, it's going to take some time. Tonight may not resolve a lot, but at least you get to hear how people feel, they can express theirself. I've spoke before you, before, and I've mentioned that I was on chemotherapy twice for having liver disease, and the doctors told me, and it's supposed to be so, that about a year after you're done with the therapy, you can regain your energy back. In my case, that's not so. You know, I've had, huh, not to mention just the liver, but I've had four joint replacements in my right knee and five joint replacements in my left. And I'm, I guess I'm trying to get to the point about pain. I use cannabis in lots of different ways, and I really don't know what's going to happen because of my liver. I can't take pills. They make me sick. I'm glad I can't take them because I'm clear-headed, and I don't know. I'm just, I'm just up here trying to plead with you to reconsider all the patients and everything that they've asked you for. And I just hope that you make sound decisions based on the patient's needs. I understand that the other folks in Clear Lake that have issues with marijuana, I understand that, and I'm sorry for it, but this is my health and this is my life, and I need it. So I ask that you reconsider, please. Thank you for your time. Thank you, everyone.
Time.
My name is Richard Jones. I've been a resident of Lake County since nineteen ninety-seven. One thing that hasn't been mentioned at the meeting here is I own a couple of properties in Lake County and Clear Lake, and last year I was approached by somebody that offered to, and I know from other people that this is not something that's unusual, but been offered to have somebody construct a fence, and then they would pay the property owner, and then they would obviously take some responsibility in me growing on somebody else's property. Now, I actually, I have a, a medical card, I have a, a problem with my neck, but penalizing those that are sick, those people that have stood up here and are part of the community, our community, that need to be able to grow a product that they can actually smoke themselves, that's one thing. But having people come in and take over somebody's property and then grow whatever they grow, ninety-nine plants or whatever they grow, and then the person that owns the property, in my guess, would be probably responsible for the property, I'm guessing, seems like you can also penalize those people that are poor, that are taking a couple of thousand dollars, that's supplementing their income, they're getting a fence out of it and improving their property. And I think the people that are actually coming into the county and doing that are the people that you should be targeting, those people that are not part of our community that are taking advantage of everybody here.
Hi, my name, hi, my name's David. I just have a couple of things to say. I think he said a lot right there. That's exactly what I'm thinking as well. Another thing is, I just want to let you know, my wife's sister moved from, uh, she's twenty-seven years old, she moved from Reno, and she, her husband left her, and she had a little boy, she has a little boy and stuff. We're going to visit him tomorrow, and she came, she needed help. A church brought her here to Clear Lake, and she had a bag of pills with her, she would not give up. And for four years, I mean, she didn't even know who she was, they didn't know who she was, the kid had once got to the pills and everything, you know? And I'm just here on behalf of the sick people that need the medication, and I understand, I'm with you guys a hundred percent on six plants, and, you know, I mean, just keep it, you know, by, by the law, you know? But anyways, she, uh, she was here for a week, and about halfway through the week, she ran out of meds and stuff, and her mom, she came here to be with her sister and her mom, and ran out of meds, and she went down here to the hospital, and they gave her something close to it, and within, she came on Sunday, and this Sunday she gargled up, died in mom's room in the abs, and it was just pills everywhere and everything, and I think if she would have had medical marijuana in her life four years prior, when everybody knew who she was and stuff, that wouldn't have happened. And so I'm, I'm way for medical marijuana. Another thing is, I just want to share with you what a close friend of mine said about, if I can hear you here, oh, God. Okay. Whatever your personal opinion is of marijuana, I watched my mom suffering every day the last year of her life. Marijuana made it possible to get up each day, to eat each day, and to live each day to the fullest. If they outlaw each, if outlaw the growing of the state of Clear Lake, they will be doing a great injustice and adding to the suffering of the people in terminal illness who are just trying to...
Stop. That's it.
Rick Mayo, citizen of Clear Lake, founding president of the local NAACP for thirty years. The organization has been here that long, and we have been fighting all kinds of civil rights issues throughout Lake County for that number of years. Where your, this particular issue is concerned, the voters of California passed Prop 215, as imperfect as that law may be, and as vague and, and as ambiguous as some of the language in it may be, the thing is, is that until the voters decide again how they are going to either legalize it in California or we're going to still have what we have. You have many people that suffer with all types of illnesses throughout California, including Clear Lake, Lakeport, and Lake County in, 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 in whole. But you're going to have to find a happy medium here, ladies and gentlemen of the council, so that the people who need the medication, that have the proper credentials to, to have it and grow it, should have their medication. Now, I remember when you went back to two thousand and eleven, when, about the dispensaries, and I thought some of this had already been settled here, but I see that it hasn't. And so, everybody has rights. These people that have the med, that need the medication has rights too. So does the rest of us who suffer with all types of other breathing issues and so forth, and property owners have rights.
Hi, my name is Marie Weathers. I'm a resident of Lake County, live in the city of Clear Lake, have lived here since nineteen ninety-six. I see all these signs that say sick lives matter, well, lives matter also. I would like to stay well, but when I turn my swamp cooler on in the summer and all I can smell is marijuana coming into my house...
Marie, look at us, please.
I'm not well. It makes me sick. So unless we can figure a way to keep the odor from permeating the air all around us, I don't want anyone growing around me. And a mile away was, last year was the closest to me that I saw plants, but I still got that odor in my house at night. So I agree that sick lives matter. Every life matters. Thank you.
Evening, guys. Uh, my name is Josh. I served in the military for about eleven years, which means I defended all of your rights. And for you to sit there on your cellphone while people are trying to address issues pertaining to this meeting that you guys wanted to have is garbage. We're standing by here to give you our feeling, and you're sitting on your cellphone after this lady said, please put your cellphones away.
We need to keep it on topic.
So I, I'm offended when I go and I, and I fight for everybody's freedoms, and we're supposed to be heard based on that, and you can't even take that minute to hear us out.
We need to keep it on topic. We need to keep it focused.
I understand that, I understand that, but, but at the same time, we, we want the respect that, that we deserve, and being on your cellphone while people are speaking is not respectful. Okay? Appreciate that. Okay? Okay. All right, so I did, I fought for this country for eleven years. That means I fought for you, 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 I fought for everybody in this room. I fought for everybody's right. For you guys to say that you're going to take that right for us to have our six plants is garbage, is garbage. The state says that we can have those plants, whether it be six, whether it be a hundred, take the hundred out, take the seventy-five out, leave us who want our six plants, I'm sure we'll gladly pay your fifty dollars to grow our six plants, as long as everybody else follows suit. And when I say everybody else, I mean law enforcement. If they're going to enforce those six plants, enforce the ones that are doing more than that. Okay? That's all I ask. We've got to find a common ground. That's it. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Seeing, seeing no one else, I'm going to close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council for discussion.
My, my name's not important.
I closed public comment. I'm sorry.
Pardon?
I closed public comment, and I can't...
Are you serious?
I did.
I was, I was walking up.
I cannot allow one...
Are you serious?
No.
Are you serious?
I set the rules at the beginning.
This only shows that all these people don't give a shit about what's going on.
Excuse me. We, we have heard. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's, it's our turn. Excuse me. It is our turn.
[applause] I'm calling for your dedication. I'm not... It's sick. And I don't know if that's a specific attitude, say about these people. She's...
You're not helping anything.
... so... nature's legitimate. You don't have to ask permission.
Okay, thank you. Let's, um, let's bring it back. We are at the council right now, we will be discussing it. Okay, we are doing our best with talking. It's at our level, and we will have our discussion now. We have heard everyone, and we appreciate everyone being here to voice your concerns. Thank you. It is with us.
I'm sorry that some people are disrespectful. You guys, you guys, nobody really wants to be respectful. You've always heard, so everybody's... If you're good for it or not, you still got to show everybody respect.
Um, excuse me, this is going to be your warning. This is a warning. Please sit down and let us conduct business. I'm sorry, apologies or protests or anything, it is a disruption, and it's our turn to do business. Please allow that. Thank you. Council members of the...
So I wanted to go over a few notes that I took from all the speakers. I wanted to say to everybody that spoke, I really appreciate you coming and speaking and expressing yourself, no matter what side of the issue you are on, everybody has their right to express themselves. I feel bad that some people were not heard in full due to some outbursts in the crowd. It's really, really useful to be respectful to everybody, no matter how they feel about the topic, no matter how different it is compared to your opinion. We all need to be humble and realize that sometimes we might be wrong in the way that we think and feel, and we need to allow other people to express themselves differently. We need to learn that...
We have heard everyone, and we appreciate everyone being here to voice your concerns. Thank you. It is with us.
I'm sorry that some people are disrespectful. You guys, you guys, nobody really wants to be respectful. You've always heard, show everybody's respect. If you're good for it or not, you still gotta show everybody respect.
Excuse me, this is going to be your warning. This is a warning. Please sit down and let us conduct business. Sorry, apologies or protests or anything, it is a disruption and it's our turn to do business. Please allow that. Thank you.
So I wanted to go over a few notes that I took from all the speakers. I wanted to say to everybody that spoke, I really appreciate you coming and speaking and expressing yourself, no matter what side of the issue you are on. Everybody has their right to express themselves. I feel bad that some people were not heard in full due to some outbursts in the crowd. It's really, really useful to be respectful to everybody, no matter how they feel about the topic, no matter how different it is compared to your opinion. We all need to be humble and realize that sometimes we might be wrong in the way that we think and feel, and we need to allow other people to express themselves differently. We need to learn that or else it's gonna be a lot of problems to deal with the rest of the issues we have to deal with in this city. This is not our only topic that we need to bring. We hope to see as many people as this for some of the other issues we're gonna tackle. Somebody said that all of the pictures in the report were wrong. There was a lot of legitimate grows on there. There was a few errors, and I'm really glad that we expressed the concern that we made errors and talked about that. But the majority of them were legitimate grows. I did a lot of, hold on, hold on, it's no longer your turn at this point. Please be respectful. I did a lot of research on those pictures, and the large majority of them were legitimate. I was the one that brought up the concern. Some people were wondering why we didn't do anything. Well, the tool that we created was unfortunately not the tool that we thought that we had. And unfortunately, we're not professionals. We're trying our best to create what's best to make the best effect for all of us, a positive effect. And that's why we're here right now, to create the right tool so that it can make a difference. So please do not blame, I made that failure last week, I already apologize. Please don't make the same mistake I did and blame the wrong source for the problem. The source is the tool. We misconstrued the tool. As far as citations and why police didn't do something like that, it's not a criminal issue. It's a civil issue, and at this point, it's code enforcement. We all know we've had issues with our budget for code enforcement, and when it goes along without an eradication clause, there's not much that we could have done with the tool we have created. I believe, if I may say so, that there, the fines that go along with the grows from last year are oncoming. So it's not like nothing was done. There's a problem in our communities. I think that we might see more people on the wanting no grow here if they felt safer to express themselves without knowing that their neighbors that they're afraid of would not be here to maybe target them later. There are people who are afraid to call our police to tell them what's going on, and we have to realize that that's an unfair situation that we have. So we need to be able to look at both sides here. There is a definite problem. Somebody spoke about the avenues. I knocked on a lot of doors in the avenues. There's a huge problem. You should not be able to drive around and see it as blatantly obvious as it was, as it is for the last few years. And it's not getting better. It's gotten worse because we were not able to do what we needed to do last year, which is why we're here, so we don't have that again. I mean, some people are talking about Colorado and Oregon. Clear Lake is not a state. We can't legalize marijuana here. I think that from the conversations I had this morning at a meeting, as well as other many conversations, a lot of people are looking forward to not having to deal with this by having the federal government and the state take care of it and grab the bull by the horn so we don't have to be stuck in the middle between a rock and a hard place. So that's not a possibility. We can't solve it by legalizing it. It's not gonna solve our problem. I know that somebody talked about the just cause for the appeal process. It's still zero ordinance at that point. So you can appeal, but my feeling personally is that if it's a zero tolerance and you have a plant, there's not really much that you can say as far as an appeal, which is why I offered to do a compromise, because I would like to see a compromise. I know that we've spoken about crime rates, and I noticed that on the cities ordinance, the city staff ordinance, it says, and I don't have it right in front of me, something along the lines of because of the increase in crime rate. I have a police report right here in front of me. I have a feeling Craig might rebut off me on that one. But I have a police report that shows the difference in crime between 2013 and 2014, and as a whole, we are down as far as reports that was made. We are down 2%. There it is. We're down 2%. Some of these are mind-boggling numbers, because I look at all of the grows that we have, and I can't help but seem to fall into that logic of how could there not be more crime? We have minus 33% in robbery, minus 21% in assault aggravated, minus 9% in burglary. What we have in positives is simple assault is plus 4%, and larceny is plus 15%. Now, larceny could definitely be somebody stealing pot, that's stealing property, and larceny is exactly that. But if we get rid of the large grows, then my feeling is these numbers would be a lot less. If we're already down 2%, where would we be if we had created the right tool to be able to get rid of all these large grows? And so that's, that's what I'm looking forward today, is creating that right tool. Back to my notes here. Sorry, guys, tell me to shut up if you need to. Our health metrics. We are one of the most unhealthy communities in, unfortunately, all of California. Lake County is typically dead last on most lists, and Clear Lake out of Lake County typically does not end up anywhere else, other than at the bottom of the list either. We're number one for cancer. We're number one for suicide. We're number one for depression of those under the age of 18. We have a lot of issues. We are very sick, and we need to change those things. Marijuana, from my perspective, and I'm probably gonna get people angry at me, does not cure these things. They help facilitate somebody's life, quality of life while they're dealing with these things. So to grow a large crop is not helping your community, it does not help you. To be able to grow your medicine in a very small private yard, in a small private indoor, is something that can be done with a supplement afterwards from the dispensaries if you need more. Somebody spoke about the avenues growing. That's the avenues, and unfortunately, the parks typically very, very bad areas that need a change. And I'm sure the people who live there want to see that change. They deserve that change. They're paying property tax, they're paying sales tax, they're paying for their government, their local government to work for them, and unfortunately, because of what we've had, we have not been able to provide that service to them, and they deserve that service. Now, some people are bringing up 215 and 420, and the way court cases work, Live Oak has set the precedent. It's not, right now, any city and any county can have a zero tolerance ordinance, can eliminate the growing of marijuana, can eliminate the dispensaries of distributing marijuana. My belief is, whether thinking if we can, we really need to think if we should. And what are our limits that will work so that everybody can find that fine medium? I mean, no matter where we go, one side's gonna have to give a little bit, and the other side's gonna have to give. Nobody's gonna win today, if we have a compromise, or else, not everybody's gonna win either if we don't compromise. Somebody spoke about forcing people inside, especially those that are criminals. If they can't grow outside, they will go inside, and that's not what we want. I think that Willie Cepeda, personally, I thought, made a great presentation of what he finds. He doesn't find the ones that are legitimate. He finds the ones that are burned down, and he's been called to, to see and witness what he sees. And that is not civilized way of being, intruding a home, intruding your family, if your family is living in those homes. And we can't have those kinds of things around either. That is destructive to our community. We have enough infrastructure issue, we don't need to add more. Some people have talked about lower home values. In a sense, that's not true. I've spoken, actually, if I can, at the judge's breakfast on Thursday mornings, I've heard David Hughes say that prices are slowly rising on property values. I just spoke to another real estate agent. Prices are rising. Should they be rising faster if we got rid of the big grows? Yes, I think we can all agree to that. But we are not destroying our property values with what we have right now. They are actually increasing. Somebody, some people were asking for more than what our current ordinance has. I just don't think that's a possibility. I'm just gonna be realistic about that. That's not something we, I don't think even plan on discussing at this point in time. We already have an issue with what's going on. We need to either stick with what we have and give a teeth, go down and give a teeth, or obviously with what the consensus was from the council, which was to go to zero Some people spoke about unconstitutional regulations of Measure N. I just wanted to correct that. Measure N itself is not the issue, it was the way in which it was enforced. There was a warrantless searches that were done on properties. We have a Fourth Amendment right, as well as a Fourteenth Amendment right, and that is the basis of the lawsuit, not the measure itself. The measure is actually being upheld. Just wanted to make sure and rectify that. As far as due diligence, I heard that quite often. I wanted to let everybody know I knocked on over 1,500 doors last year to be in this seat, and only two people told me, "Get rid of everything." The rest said, "Get the big grows gone." To me, that speaks volume. We're here to represent people, and we're also here to make sure we make the right decision that the rest of the people, not just those 1,500, but all 15, 1,500 houses, but all 15,000 people are living in a community where they feel safe. Safe enough to come to the podium and express themselves, no matter what their views are, and safe enough to walk out their front door and enjoy the place we live in. We need to find that medium. So we can't give people what they want, but we have to give something to make sure that we can find the happy medium for everybody. And also, what's going to work for our city to be able to enforce it. I think at this moment, I'm gonna give up the mic. I feel like I've had it way too long already.
I appreciate and I agree with folks who what Bruno said. I spoke with a lot of people as I was campaigning as well, and got a different response. I know that a lot of people are afraid, and were afraid to come to this meeting. Spoke with a lot of elderly, we have a lot of elderly in our community, who, from the months of typically July through October, aren't able to enjoy what was once the cleanest air in the state of California and October and September. Because of large grows that were going on in our neighborhoods, in our neighborhoods in the park, and as has been mentioned, in the avenues. And I understand that those are the large grows. But what I haven't seen, and I unfortunately got Mr. Sabatier's suggestion for a zero grow marijuana ordinance with permit exception, just before the meeting started. So I haven't really had a chance to chew on them, I'm sure the council here hasn't had a chance to chew on or try to digest all the material that's there. One of the things I was looking for is what is the size of a mature plant that isn't identified? Isn't identified by height or width or size? I have looked into the Lakeport ordinance, and I see some positives there, but I also am aware of some negatives that are happening with regard to size in outdoor grows versus strictly limited to a greenhouse-type building on a property. And I also asked Councilman Sabatier about the size of the building. There's no height regulation for it. By personal experience, I've seen a lot of marijuana, a lot of marijuana grows, a lot of devastation caused by those things. But I've also seen that marijuana has worked for patients, and it has offered relief. This is a very difficult topic, and I have a lot of respect for all of you there, but also the members that are sitting up here and have to try to ntle through this and come up with a good decision that's gonna try to work best for everybody. So when we talk about Proposition 215, it was tied to the compassionate use law. We also need to remember and have compassion for those who may not agree with us. And when I, I gotta tell you, folks, I didn't take copious notes as Bruno did, but when someone was speaking in support of a zero grow, there was a lot of disrespect. There were a lot of comments, there were a lot of root comments, and they weren't allowed to express their opinions freely. Yet I watched, and I looked out to see the signs were held up, and I noticed that if someone was speaking for legal, or keeping a six-plant minimum, or some other provisions within that grow ordinance, that you were quiet. And this whole process is for you guys to come and speak to us, and then we can take that information and make decisions based on that. So my curiosity is, if we can't be quiet and give respect in this room, and through this process, will you really respect the ordinance that we're trying to create? So we have a lot to consider, and I wanna yield some time to the other council members for their thoughts.
It's definitely a difficult situation, and I did not come into the room with my mind completely made up. I think I have a newfound compassion for everyone in the room, and what you're all going through. And I know that we all go through things in our lives. And for me, right now, I have to take into consideration the entire community. And there are a few bad apples out there who are making it bad, or everyone else. The fact of the matter is, though, those bad apples are huge. They're taking over the grove, and they're rotting the trees. And the only way to survive something like that sometimes is to lay low and weed out the bad apples. Sometimes there has to be, sometimes you have to cut the whole orchard down in order to be able to save the soil. I did notice in here, and somehow the discussion brought something to my attention, that the dispensaries remain open. I wasn't aware that they provided product at no cost. That was interesting. And... I teach high school now. I wasn't aware that they were providing product at no cost, and that this would potentially could remove the opportunity for the dispensaries to maintain supply. So that's something I'm considering now in my head. We did compromise last time we had this ordinance in front of them hugely. We overcompromised. And during that whole process, I really felt like, okay, we're going too big, too fast. When you're trying to implement something new, and you're trying to make changes in regulations with the way that the state of being, it's sometimes best to take very small, very tiny baby steps. And going straight for the full maximum, in this instance, it did not work out. Somebody mentioned that we should meet some of the medical marijuana patients. We should meet people who are using marijuana. And I've met lots of the people in this room before. I also met someone new who uses marijuana. It was a 14-year-old boy. I was trying to teach him English. Not only could he not pay attention to me, or try to gather the concept of what English language skills we were learning in class, but he didn't think that it was a big deal. We're creating a culture here that we're passing on to kids. And that doesn't mean that you or I are doing it, but as a community, we're creating a culture that we're passing on to our kids, and we have to be cognizant of that every time we do anything we do. The real problem with 215 is that it did not provide a mechanism for dealing with this right here. Even if this, this is a very pretty flyer, by the way. Even if Assembly Bill 266 does pass, and marijuana becomes legal for recreational use, that will not be a cart launch. That will not be go-for-it, everything's free-for-all. There will still be the need to implement regulations and to monitor how this is being implemented. It can't just be left to a free-for-all. That's like throwing cupcakes in the middle of- That's like throwing cupcakes in the middle of thirty toddlers and saying, "Go for it," and expecting them to be ready to go for pictures in twenty minutes. It's just not going to happen that quickly and that fast. So we're at this point, I think, to be taking really small baby steps in whatever we decide to do.
Okay, and thank you all, council members, for all your comments. I agree with a lot of you guys. I think there was a lot of disrespect in several different ways here. And I hope that doesn't happen if we continue a meeting. Couple of questions I have, um, was what was the reason, and I'm asking this to the chief, that this, our ordinance could not, the way it stands, be enforced? What was it that we did wrong, exactly? Somebody want to hand him the mic?
All right, now is it working? There we go. Um, I think there's people at the table, mainly our attorneys, that could answer the question better. Um, one of my biggest issues with this, there was a misconception that this was a law enforcement ordinance. It absolutely was not. It's civil ordinance. Civil ordinances need to be enforced by our civil department, which would be our code enforcement. What we were doing was we were doing compliance checks, trying to help the code enforcement. And that's all we were doing, is we were going out and seeing if they were in compliance, meaning if they had the recommendation, and then how many plants they had for that recommendation. And when the comment was made, we never did a compliance check on a compliant grow for the ones that were out there and that we were directed to. We never went to a small grow. I'm not saying there's none in the city. I'm just saying, we never went to one. We did a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-seven compliance checks. Um, with that, the other thing is, is there wasn't an abatement portion of this. So if we had over the six plants, the civil department or our code enforcement could not abate those plants. And that was one of the issues with it. So then we're on to the administrative penalties side of it. With the lack of staffing, which I believe there's now a light at the end of the tunnel for having that, but those were the issues, um, in my opinion.
Okay, so, um, so basically, police department went out, did a compliance check, came back, Phil Chief worked out, handed it over to the city, but we have no code enforcement, so nothing could really be followed through. Am I correct on that?
We were limited on code enforcement. That's what the police department did, yes.
So I did want to clarify, because everybody needs to know that it wasn't only necessarily the police department's per se fault. So I think it was pretty much our fault as councils for maybe not following through on some verifications. Um, I just think that we need to, I think we need to look at what it is that we can maybe do with our ordinance that we already have that can make it better right now, um, and see is there a way to put the abatement in? Is there a way to enforce it if we're going to be able to have code enforcement? Um, you know, with what we already have. I mean, it was something that we, as councils, decided to do. I agree, I kind of felt kind of pressured and rushed at the time we did that, to try to make everybody happy. And, but one of the questions that I had at that particular meeting when we made this an ordinance was, I wanted everybody that wanted to grow their six plants to come in and just register so that the police knew you were growing legally. At that time, I also got the feedback of, "How dare me ask that question?" And at the last meeting, our last council meeting was, "How can you, you know, how can we say that this is happening when we have no record?" Well, we have no record because you guys weren't willing to come in and register. And my point here is, is if you're growing legally your six plants, what was your problem about coming in and registering in the first place? So if you guys would've came in and registered as I wanted, then we would've had some statistics to be able to say, "This is you guys, and you're not doing anything wrong, and this is what the police department spent at." And, um, so if we go with what, some of the things that Bruno wants to do here on his thing, fifty dollars, one of our compliance one check isn't going to be enough, um, so it's gonna have to be one of the fifty dollars in my mind, um, because you can't just go out once. Compliance checks need to be checked several times to make sure that they're, you go out once and they know you've come, they're just gonna go on and not, and grow however many they want, and we're gonna be in the same situation. So my point is, is we need to make sure that when we do put in, if we're gonna change the ordinance or put in a new ordinance, we definitely need to make sure that it is able to be followed through and that, you know, everybody's willing to comply with it. I personally, you know, I believe that marijuana, and you guys are gonna be totally against this, but I've seen the effect of what marijuana does into these children. You know, I have a grandson that is addicted to it. You know, it's a horrible thing. You know, I have other people that just told me this last week. That, guess what? They believe me that it is a gateway to other drugs, because they choose it. It may not be for everybody, but it's there, you know? And I just personally, and I didn't interrupt you guys when you guys talk. Please don't do it to me. We have differences of opinions. And I have my right to my opinion, you have your rights of yours. And if you're not willing to work with that opinion, then I don't know why we're here. So if you guys say, "Work with that, work with you," then you need to let me have my opinion, just as I did here. So thank you. I just said, it was my opinion. I've seen it with, you guys are showing your point. I'm trying to tell you the other side. There are bad sides to this, whether you guys want to believe it or not. These children are getting into this, and they're using it as a recreational, and they're not responsible, and they don't know. They're ending up in trouble when on probation and breaking into places because they just get high. And we've all seen it in the sixties. I know you don't remember the sixties. If you remember, you didn't, you weren't there. Uh, but it just says some of the things that we do need to consider, that we need to make sure that it's safe, that if we're gonna have it in our community, we need to make sure that the people that are growing it are going to be able to be responsible for it so that we don't have this problem continuing on. I don't wanna see my community come someplace that I wanna move. You know, that I wanna move away from. I don't wanna move away from here. But if it gets to be carried out of hand as it is, uh, you know, it's definitely a choice that I would make, because I don't want my family growing up here if it's going to be the way it was with us last year. We definitely gotta do something, and we've definitely gotta work on it. And I just wanna make sure that whatever we put in place is something that we can enforce, that everybody is going to agree upon. Whether it's a no-grow, if it's a no-grow, we start over. If it's a no-grow, we start over and look at things. The state will eventually, I hope, you know, come to a conclusion to make this just as Colorado and the rest of them did. They had to make a decision, and they did it. And, um, I think it's just something that we really, whatever we decide, I wanna make sure that it's enforceable if we decide to do whatever. It's got to be enforceable.
Okay, Jeff, 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 okay. I will chime in here until someone else is ready, or as long as I can. I'll take that advice. Well, the first thing I would like to start with, thank you for being here and coming out. Is that better? Thank you. Thank you for being here and coming out and expressing what it means in your lives to have medicinal marijuana. Because I did sit here, and I said this at the last meeting, but I didn't see a lot of you. I did sit here a year ago, and we had multiple meetings. Jerry, you were with us. Um, and we were very compassionate, and we were very willing to work with the citizens. But unfortunately, maybe the council, some of us were new, or maybe some of us, maybe the attorney at that time wasn't like what we thought they were. Um, you helped hire this one too, Jerry. So my point being, we have been compassionate for a year, and the marijuana growing has done nothing but get worse. So in my eyes, at some point, when things are being destroyed, you have to, I agree with Gina more than anything, if you got a bug in the orchard, sometimes all the plants have to go to get rid of the pest. And unfortunately, then, maybe you can start at ground zero again to possibly rebuild a pathway. Now, I see people giving up and leaving. I didn't haven't said my decision yet, but that's okay, 'cause I heard you. So I also heard, um, I forget the name that she spoke, 'cause we heard a lot of people tonight, but she explained that she did things organically, and she spent a fortune. That was her words, a fortune. If she spends a fortune to grow her six plants, then we are going, I understand what the problem maybe was going to be with the dispensaries, how it's going to maybe limit things, but if she's already spending a fortune, she's going to be able to still get access to medicine. We're not, we, there was a big thing going around that we were gonna take away those two, and we don't want any of this stuff. Excuse me! That is not what we're trying to do. We're trying to make a safe community for both sides of this issue, and for our children. Our children are who needs to be safe. And we can giggle and we can do all that stuff, but it's true. Last night, my husband didn't go to the gym 'cause he don't wanna leave our daughter home. So it's everywhere. We, we, you know, somebody said we can't bury our heads in the sand. I heard that too. Um, we have buried our hands in the heads in the sand by allowing it to go as long this year as we did. We should've been discussing this a long time ago. We should've revisited it as soon as it became, that we saw it was becoming a bigger problem. Our fault. Our fault, I care for not doing that. And I kind of, I'm, I'm feeling like, um, it was also mentioned the county straightened up, so everybody's coming to Clearlake. Yeah. And I've been asked to look at Lakeport's ordinance, and I did, but I have a few issues where we are hugely different than Lakeport. Lakeport has approximately five thousand people. We have over, I think, fifteen thousand. That's a big difference. That's a big difference to try to rule and try to, you know, keep under everybody orderly. And Lakeport doesn't have any subdivisions like the avenues or like Clearlake Park. We have those things in our city that makes it really different. I personally like it. I like what we have in our city. I like Clearlake as well, but I choose Clearlake. But the thing is, it's really hard. We can't compare them. They're not, they can't be compared. I'll respect their ordinance. If it's working for them, great. I do hear they're having a couple of issues, but either way, that is their ordinance. We have to create what's good for us. And obviously, the one that we have in place is not. Now, I also believe, there was four of us at the last meeting, and I don't know where everybody stands now, but there was four of us that gave super clear direction to staff to draft something to bring back to us. And I think that's what we should be looking at. We've heard the public, let's see what they've brought back to us now. And unfortunately, sometimes you change your minds, or you get on the fence, or you think, "Oh, maybe I was thinking irrationally, or rushed, or pushed." But when you direct staff to do something, you're spending the public's money, you are spending time, energy, efforts of them, and yourselves, 'cause they're gonna bring it back to you to look at. That you need to really uphold that and do the best to your ability to consider what they've brought to you, because you have, they are your staff. You are here to keep them in check. You are here to hire some of them, as in our new city attorney and our city manager, who's not new, but they are here for us. We have directed them. We need to at least listen and discuss what they have given us, and if not, approve it, because we have discussed it, we have given the direction, and they have brought us back something now, I believe, with the teeth and the tools in it that was lacking before. Does it have zero in it? It does. And again, I have to go back to the orchard statement, because that's the only thing I can think of that makes it kind of clear. So I have read this. Um, it's much different. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. It is much different than our last ordinance. Very clear, very black and white, to where things will not become the issues where we had no enforcement before or couldn't enforce it. So I don't know, 'cause I don't see any other pins up, but I ran out a little sticky right there. So, okay, go for it.
I have a question for our financial director, Mr. Beck now. You talked about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar income from a CDBG. Can you explain that CDBG and where it came from? 'Cause for some reason at this moment in time, it's the first time I've heard about it. I've heard about our CDBG for fixing of Phillips and Eighteenth Avenue, but I have not heard about this specifically for code enforcement. And please tell me if I'm wrong, and if I've heard it.
Okay. When, as I indicated in my, when we received the new half-dollar grant to do the Phillips Avenue and Baytown Avenue, the vote approved this, one of the conditions of that grant was that CDBG was changing their policy to require grant recipients to spend their program income money before they draw down on the grant. Now, the program income money comes in on an annual basis, and it depends on different factors, um, having to do with some of our housing, CDBG housing, whether there are any foreclosures, whether any loans paid off, and so on. So we did a calculation, um, over the next two and a half years, which would be the term of the grant, to calculate what the amount of that program income money is. We don't know that it's going to be five hundred. That is our best estimate of what it should be. It may be a little higher, maybe a little more. Based on that, we requested, since we have the request authority to spend that money, and we were required to spend that money, we determined that we could apply for a code enforcement allocation, it's called a supplemental, to the grant, which would allow us to spend the money of code enforcement in the city. Now, there's, there are some details to it, which I was planning on advising you of in the meeting in March, not to allow the plan near doing that. But in terms of calculating, using that money, we estimated that we should be able to fund two full-time code enforcement offices, which would give us basically three, 'cause we already have a part-time one at this point. Some attorney fees to deal with the abatement, and some staff time, some staff work to support the work of the code enforcement offices. The reason you hadn't heard about it was because we really didn't wanna jump the gun and say, "Oh, look what we've got," when it hadn't been approved by the CDBG. Um, we received on Wednesday, um, basically the approval. There's one more signature that needs to be had, but that's only because he's out of town until Tuesday. And there's no reason for us to think that we're gonna sign it. But that's where the meeting was coming from.
Hello? Thank you. Um, do we have any idea what these attorney fees, like minimal amount, would be when it comes to... when it comes to the hearing processes and going through the abatement process, or what?
Um, we can only make some estimates. And what we did, um, I, I talked to Ryan, and kind of got an idea of what, uh, a code enforcement, um, going into get a code enforcement abatement order would be, uh, because it's a ongoing proceeding. Um, so, and I don't have the numbers on the top of my head, but it was something to the effect of, we were figuring, I think it was 30, 3,000, 3,500? About 3,000. And we were figuring something like seven, um, abatements that would get us started, and then put in some extra, you know, some extra funds. So, it's not a specific number, because it's going to be very dependent on the code enforcement officer's address.
The number also should go down over time, as the first one or two may take a little more time, but as staff gets comfortable with it, they can do it potentially themselves with very low oversight, with legal people.
Thank you for the response on that. And so you said that you, that possibly that could deal with seven abatements? And, does that mean that other abatements will come directly out of our general fund? At that point? Potentially? Uh, I'm, I'm hypothetical, but I'm just trying to figure out where, i-if we have seven abatements, to me, that would be awesome to only have seven abatements. Uh, but my guess is we will probably need more than seven. And so just wondering where the rest of the money comes from after that, that point?
It, it is, uh, there, there are two things going on when we're doing code enforcement. Um, and one of them is obviously, uh, assessing administrative penalties or fines against those who are not complying. Now, in, in the March meeting, I believe we'll be bringing forward about 32 and a half, or 33,000 dollars worth of assessment fines. Um, as that process begins to pick up, that should sup, that should augment the money, the additional money that would be available to do further assessments. The problem is, a lot of it depends on the cooperation. In fact, if the code enforcement officer goes out, cites the person they cleaned up, you know, then, then there's not going to be a sub, a baitment cost that we would be, would be collecting. The other thing I, I also want to point out, um, is the CDBG money does not allow for actual abatement. These are attorney fees cost for getting the abatement orders. We're going to still have to figure out how to pay for the abatement. CDBG money, um, can be used on residential properties for rehabilitation. But there's a lot of our code enforcement issues that are not necessarily rehabilitation buildings. They're basically cleaning up of the problems. And that, we would not be able to use CDBG funds for that portion of it. So, we still have a little bit of disposal we're trying, we're trying to put together for next week's budget.
I-if I can clarify with what you just said, we have the potential of $500,000 for two additional code enforcement officers, plus attorney fees for abatements and hearing, public hearings, and so on. But that the code enforcement officers, in order for them to complete their work, the money needs to be found elsewhere when it comes to abatement?
Correct. And I want to, and I want to make sure I clarify something. The $500,000 in, um, program income, of that, we're allocating 400,000 towards the, the code enforcement issues. Another 100,000 for another supplemental, dealing with, um, uh, loan income housing, which is a separate part of that. So, I didn't want to give you the impression that all of the 500,000 is going towards that. At this point, it's, it's going to be about 400,000. And that, of course, depends on the amount of money, the amount of actual program income money there is. But we believe it's going to be right about 500,000.
And then, um, I know, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that we did abate one property of a marijuana grow this year, correct, Dave?
That I, that I don't know.
No?
That I don't, it could happen.
Eradication? No, no eradication whatsoever? Okay, so we don't know what the price would be to us as far as a cost, other than, uh, the, the $3,000 attorney fees? Approximately $3,000?
I just want to clarify that these funds would not be specifically for eradication.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out the top.
It's going to be a variety of other types of abatements, demolition, dilapidation, that type of thing. So, we don't have all those particulars worked out yet. This evening, we're working toward that for, for March. Um, so I don't know that we could really answer that question simply.
Okay, okay. Uh, let me move on real quick. Assessment fines, you're talking about approximately $33,000. These are the assessments fines that I spoke of earlier for grows that were found last year to be out of compliance, where we will be submitting assessment fines for those. Is that correct, or am I incorrect?
I don't, I don't know what those assessment fines were actually for. I don't know that they were for marijuana. They may have been for, um, cleanup of properties. And, it's been a while since I looked at the files, so I don't know the specifics. So, I have to find out if they were.
So, I know from the police report that I have right somewhere in here, um, that I happen to have memorized, that we did 143 compliance checks, and according to the chief, none of them were in compliance. What did we do with those in compliant properties? Did we submit fines for the lack of compliance?
Because we didn't have an eradication clause in the existing ordinance, what we did do were to tag fences that were not compliant with the city code. Some, I believe, of what you're going to have before you, for the hearing on the 30 to 33,000, were as a result of non-compliance of some of those red tags.
And you're talking about the red tags of the fence, but nothing about the actual, uh, lack of compliance for the amount of plants that they were allowed to grow?
There were, there were some people that complied. Um, but for those that did not comply, we did not have the ability to get an abatement warrant to go in and pull those plants.
But even without pulling the plants, is the fine, because the fine, the, if I remember correctly, it says on there, first offense, $100, second offense, $200, third offense, $500, or potential jail time, which we know is not going to be the case. Um, none of that had to do with anything about abatement. We still weren't able to actually submit fines to people who illegally grew their plants?
I, I haven't seen the staff report yet, because it's coming to you in March. So, we know that that's the number that's been put together by code enforcement that will be coming forward. I don't have to break down the details to answer that.
Very cushions. Um, I just wanted to, uh, make a correction to some of the things that I heard. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Can I make a motion to please extend the meeting past 10:00 P.M.?
Okay, alright. Okay, I personally would, don't feel that with the information that I've given, the people that have talked, then I'm going to make a decision. And we have two other items also that are here. I mean, unless we plan on being here till midnight, which, but we may have done those meetings, and they just don't work. They're, they don't work, because people have already left, because they're, they kind of got aggravated. And I just don't think that, unless you're just going to make it, but if we're going to continue on a discussion, I just don't see how this is going to be something that we want to spend all night doing.
Thank you. For me, I think we should just make a motion, extend the meeting, and take care of this, because if people are leaving angry right now, why bring them back next week if they possibly are going to be angry again? We don't know. We need to do this. We're here to do this. And we need to discuss it, and we need to not put it off, and we need to not be afraid of discussing it. Then we need to just make a motion to extend the meeting until necessary this evening. Do you have a second?
Second.
Will call vote?
Councilmember Sabatina?
Aye.
Councilmember Perdak?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton? Nice, Mayor Cortina, please sit. And Mayor Slough?
Aye.
Alright, um, let's just get to it. Again, I'm going to go with, the best option in my mind is a lose-lose situation, where we have to find a compromise. The vegetarian living next door to the guy who barbecues every day still has to deal with the fact that they have the right to do what they want to do with the barbecue. I'm not saying that it's okay for you to have to deal with the pot being grown next to you, but what we can do is mitigate it to a minimum, so that it can be something that we can all live together. I mean, you think through our history and what we've done. Women in the workforce was something that men could not deal with. Right now, we're dealing with that in the armed forces, where they think women are being in the way and distracting our men in uniform. We have to figure out how to move forward so that we can all figure out how everybody can get what it is that they need a portion of. This is a lose-lose situation where we have to figure it out. Do we want to stick with the same ordinance that we have? Do six across? Do we want to go with the same ordinance we have? Go three all the way across? What do we want to do? Um, I, I'm willing to compromise down. Obviously, nobody wants to go up. I don't want to go up. But really, a-as far as the council, we are not that far away at all. We want to get rid of the nastiness that has unfortunately plagued this city. Uh, so let's just get down to it. I think we do have an ordinance that can work. Co-copy and paste the whole abatement process and eradication process from the new ordinance you just gave us. Paste that on the old one, and make it three across. Sounded like a motion, but it wasn't a motion. Just more for discussion.
And I completely appreciate all the work that you've done with what you did give us this evening.
Sorry. Round.
I'm good with that, so. But again, we're here to talk about, unfortunately, um, again, I'll just bring it back to the fun stuff. So, you know, and people will say they don't have the $50 to even pay, um, to pay for the dispensaries, or to pay for something, some of their medicine? Okay, to register, okay. Um, unfortunately, I have to figure out how to pay for my medical insurance for my family every month. Okay? And I also, on top of that, when, because I don't choose medicinal marijuana, and my family doesn't, um, I have to also choose the co-pay that is put on me for that medicine, because that's my choice, right? That's what I'm choosing for my family. So, to pay the premium every month, and to pay my co-pays, I feel, um, I'm not asking for any of you to do that for me, or to give me any more viewing, or to make it any cheaper for me. I'm not asking anything of you, except for a safe community that has order, public peace, health, safety, general welfare of its citizens. And unfortunately, that's, that's the reality of it. I could come up there and say, I, you know, can somebody help me with my medicine? I can't afford it, I can't, I need, I can't pay for it, or, or I don't have insurance. So, but say it's your, excuse me, it's my choice of my medicine, just like it's your choice. Excuse me, excuse me! We are not taking medicine away. We are taking the cultivation of marijuana away if we do this. And I want to make that very clear. I am not taking away, I'm not coming into anybody's homes and taking away their medicine. They are recommendations. I, excuse me! Unfortunately, what might have to happen is, I might have to take away the cultivation of it within the city limits, because it's become a problem. And I'm only speaking for my one self here. I'm not speaking to the rest of the council. We're not there yet. But I'm prepared to stay here all evening until we get there. And it's for both of us. It's for all of us, and it's for the whole community. The whole community. Not just the ones that are here tonight that weren't here last meeting, but the ones that maybe were here last meeting that didn't want to come tonight. So, I'm here for everyone. Because I'm here at every meeting. Oh, thank you for reminding me. So, just like you all have health issues that came here and spoke to us tonight. You, you desperately told us of your needs, and, and we listened to you. I have citizens and constituents call me every single day that cannot physically get to a meeting, but that this is a problem for. A lot of them, I'm going to say, live right in this neighborhood. Where are we at? We are at our senior center. Okay? A lot of people cannot get to meetings, cannot come voice their opinions. They call us personally, or they find us in the grocery store, or they light me down in the parking lot. But either way, there's a lot of citizens out there besides the ones in this room tonight. And we have to think of them. And they are the ones that come to public comment when it is not on our agenda, and explain to us what a problem it is for the three minutes they're allowed. So, just because they're not here tonight does not mean that their lives don't matter too.
Okay, I, I think I have maybe a legal question here. Um, if we went with a no-grow, what does that do to the dispensaries? Uh, are they not allowed to grow as a dispensary still? Or is that a different, isn't that kind of regulated differently?
Well, as the ordinance is written, there's no growing anywhere. If you wanted to make an amendment that dispensaries could grow within their confines, that's certainly something that's a possibility. But as this is written, there's no growing anywhere.
So, is there anybody from the dispensary still here?
Yes.
Okay. Do you grow your own marijuana here in Clearlake? Never mind, never mind.
Never mind, never mind.
We can't.
in the ordinance that's being proposed by the city.
You can just nod your head.
I might be making a mistake. I'm gonna make an attempt to answer your question based on the conversations I had with the dispensaries to ask them how this would affect them if the zero grow went through. They are only allowed to either grow themselves, which would be in their stores or in their properties, but they live on, in Clearlake and their store's in Clearlake and this no grow would affect them largely on that. And they can only purchase other products from people who are members of their clubs, which most likely is people within the county or definitely within the city limits as well. And I think one gentleman from the Compassion Center spoke of how his ability to give free medicine to the patients that frequent his store has dwindled down based on all the ordinances that have been passed in the county and Lakeport and so on. And that this would affect the last of what he's able to do. I feel like we're doing something that, that, that I don't like personally doing. I feel like we're placing blame on, and I want to praise the mayor for, for doing exactly what I want to do, which is, we made an error, placing blame on growers. Everybody tries to take advantage of whatever is available out there and, and, and we need to take ownership of this error rather than trying to blame the growers for doing something. We raised our speed limits in our street because people speed on our street and through democratic laws, we have to raise our speed limit in order to enforce them. That is our inability to enforce them and I'm not saying that's a problem of our police department because they are overcharged with things that they also have to take care of and traffic is something they do, but not something that they focus on solely. And so because of our inability to do that for our cars going too fast, we now have a faster speed limit in certain sections of our town. We should not ban driving because people are driving faster than they should. We need to compromise. We need to figure this out. I think that somebody talked about it is a gateway drug. I think life itself is a gateway to whatever else you go through. You're led by example of those that are around you. If we allow for this to continue, absolutely agree, wrong example that we are allowing to have. But those that are medicinal users, we should not treat them like they are doing something wrong, just like if somebody uses alcohol and has an alcoholic cabinet in their house. I don't want to tell you your parents are bad because I shouldn't make children look at their parents as bad people. That is what divides us or destroys our communities, not unifies us, it makes us stronger. We need to minimize it and I'm, I'm, I'm going right back again. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to even keep dropping even lower. Do you guys just want indoor to be allowed? Do you guys want just, again, three plants and that's it? The smell that people are focused on, here's my analogy, if you're in a locker room, you cannot pinpoint if the guy next to you stinks because the whole locker room smells, this whole city stunk like weed. That's not the way we should have our city. How can you pinpoint where the smell is going where no matter where you are, you will smell it? We need to get rid of that and those are the large grows. So to say that the smell is a problem, I can't even tell you if it truly is, other than the fact that we have commercial grows everywhere. So to blame your neighbor or the adjacent property to you for that one grow or especially to blame them when they're illegally growing hundreds of plants, fifty plants, whatever the illegal grow is, how do we know that three plants is going to be a problem? Why should we shut people down for something that doesn't need to be demonized? We're, we're on a movement, we're on a path towards legalization. That's not our job to do, but we can still allow people to have access if we find that bare minimum that makes us happy where we know that fine line where code enforcement can just walk in and put down a fine, start the process of abatement. We need to not, I mean, I don't know what else to say. I, 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 the offer is on the table.
Thank you, Bruno. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're friends. Yeah, well, we need a safe community. When I ran, that was one of, one of my primary issues was having a safe community to live in. We also heard testimony tonight from parents who were afraid to leave their, or have their kids walk in the neighborhoods. They've got guard dogs that are coming out, coming after them. We have, and I saw this personally, we had Mexican cartels here that, that came up tonight. That is a fact. Driving all over the county, all over the city primarily, doing the work that I do, I've been chased off by people growing because I was doing a quote for their neighbor. People are paranoid. There's a lot of money that's been made in this city because we allowed it and the county restricted it and other areas restricted it and like a vacuum, it pulled them all here. So how do we, how do we start anew? Thing that's nice about this process is just whatever the council decides either tonight to move forward or to revise this, it's not concrete, but we need a safe, safe. We need safe communities. Our kids need to feel safe until mom and dad get home from work, when they're getting off the buses and heading into the house. And other things that came up, I really liked your analogy of the barbecue versus with the vegetarian living next door, but they don't have allergic reactions, they don't have respiratory issues. I talked with people and they were actually shouted down. My folks supported medical marijuana saying that, just like people are shaking their heads as I make my comments, that they're not affected, that, and they tell me that they are. Their breathing is affected, they can't enjoy their backyard. I heard one comment tonight. I heard others, as the mayor pointed out, while I'm out in the community, they can't go into their backyard. I'm not talking about a hundred plant grow, I'm talking about six plant grow. That's why I was asking for legal advice and there isn't any that I've seen, and I have done research on this, to say what is a mature plant size. I've seen huge plants, seen plants over twelve feet tall and three feet through, all budded up and those are worth a lot of money and that would take up most of the property in the back of some of our standard fifty by a hundred foot lots that exist in our town. I heard other comments that we live in a very suburban area because that's the way that our subdivisions were created and we're at one back room window, one bedroom window, faces their backyard. Their neighbor can literally be growing just a few feet away. That restricts their ability to enjoy their backyard. So that's where we are. Is it three, is it three plants? Is it ninety-nine plants? I understand some doctors are writing scripts for ninety-nine plants.
No.
No? Oh, I apologize. I thought, I thought you were correcting me, but I, I agree that we don't want that, but that doesn't mean that it's not happening. I also concur with the folks who delivered some material tonight. I, I think the state is gonna deal with this. Unfortunately, until the feds deal with it, we're all trapped in limbo here in trying to find what's best for the most because I don't think we'll ever find what's best for all. And that's what I'm still wrestling with. But I think as we sit here tonight and looking what's best for most is a safe town, is a safe city that we can be proud of, is a place where kids can go out and play and ride their bikes that they don't feel comfortable doing right now. And that's what really worries me and that is my priority tonight, is finding that safe city again.
So as I'm sitting thinking, a couple of things. I remember Akila came up and told us how she and her neighbor communicated over the growth that was gonna be happening next door to her in her backyard and the respectful, considerate way that they dealt with each other, saying, hey, this is what's going on, is this gonna be a problem for you? How can we mitigate this for each other? That's, that's the way it's supposed to be. That's the way I grew up. If my dad was gonna get up Friday morning and start digging in the backyard, he was darn well going to let the neighbors know the day before, hey, are you guys gonna be up at seven if I make a lot of noise? While I'm at it, can I dig a hole for you? I mean, that's consideration. That's not asking a body of five people to make a rule. That's, that's called living together as a community. That's the way community members should be treating each other. We, we need to be self policing. We can't say, oh, we have this ordinance now, it's the police's job to deal with it. Well, no, we need to be dealing with each other. We live together. The police don't live with us. We're in these communities together. We have to be able to say, hey, this isn't working for me. Or, hey, I'm gonna be doing this, is it gonna bother you? If it is, I'm gonna tone it down. You know? My, my husband had to self police, he had to go out in the thing and say, hey, you almost ran over my kid twice on your dirt bike, riding up and down our streets. Sometimes we have to take it upon ourselves to do it. I mentioned earlier that I just started teaching. I'm in a high school classroom right now. Personally, I love my cell phone. Think they're awesome. So does every kid in my class. I got some very sage, sound advice from the principal when she hired me and set me loose for my very first time in a classroom alone, not as a student. She said, be hard. Be hard at first. She's like, take everything away from the beginning and then when they get the hang of it, you'll be able to interject some positive reinforcement, you'll be able to bring some of that back in. And I'm like, no, it can't be like that. No, they're gonna be able to have their cell phone in their pocket and they're gonna be able to, they're, they're gonna be cognizant enough to, to do the work and then, you know, check their phone after class or in between. It's not gonna be a big deal. We even sat down, we had this whole meeting with the whole entire class and myself and we set up rules and we all agreed to them. Every kid in the class signed it and of course, no cellphone use during class was on that list. They even thought it up. They even mentioned it. So we have these things, I made Mr. Gigantic posters, I posted them on the wall, below and behold, what do you think happens in the classroom the very next day? Every kids have cell phones out. Oh, I'm reminding you, hey, you guys made these rules up. These are our common agreements, the way we decided to treat each other in the room. Please put them away. Yeah, they put them away. Now we're at the point where every day I'm saying either this, put this away, or I'm having to send them now referrals. So now they're having a further worse consequence because in the beginning, I wasn't the one, I didn't make the hard call and come in as the hard-nosed person because I wanted everyone to like me. Well, now I'm at the point where I hate to disappoint people. No matter what I choose at this point, someone's disappointed. So I have to ask myself, who do I believe is the right thing for the most vulnerable people in this community? For all of us to be able to work together and really protect children? And for me, that's to go within, within zero tolerance for eight, for growing. At this point, we have to take our city back and we have to say, under no circumstances are we allowing for cartels and other large growers to come in and commercially use us and abuse us and then leave and take the profit of it with them.
They know what we're in.
That is exactly who we're going after. And the way, the way that I believe we need to do that is by saying, this is not tolerated at all, period. And then as time goes forward, I can say to those students, hey, you know what? We need to research Prop 21. Pull out your cell phones, look up Prop 21, tell me what you see on there. And they're able to say, oh, wow, Mrs. Dixon's awesome. She let us use her phone to look this up. And they're actually looking it up because I asked them today, hey, what article did you find about students who were, who were being sentenced to juvenile offenses? And they read them.
We're not showing them.
Always.
You are being warned right now. Gentlemen, I don't know your name, you're being warned right now. Last morning.
Do I need to leave? Do I need to leave?
I hope not.
I hope I don't have to.
Okay.
So then, as I was saying, utilizing the experiences that I have in my life is what I have to use right now to make a decision. So I'm explaining it to you all, not that I have to. But so that hopefully we can all get on the same page and understand that we're all responsible for what's going on in this town. Right now, we have to do something and, and right now, I feel like we have to do something drastic. And, and this is it. As rough as Councilmember Perdott indicated, it's not set in stone. It's not, this is a piece of paper, we can change it as soon as we feel like this, this community is ready for that.
We don't have to be that rough.
But I believe I, I said also that we should have been talking about it a long time ago when we knew it wasn't working. So that's why I've prepared a talk on my part if we need to.
Yeah. So, so a lot of my, I think my main question is, as we sat there, I said, we're not taking the medical issue, you know, away from them, but if the dispensaries cannot provide, you know, for their business to be able to sell to them, then how are we not taking it away from them? We are. We're taking it totally away. So I think we need to do something here to create something for the dispensaries in this ordinance now. If we go with a no grow, I think there has to be something in there so that the dispensaries can still get their products so that the clients can still have their, their medicine.
So, I'm, I'm new at this, but I'm gonna ask the council and it must stay at council level. I'm getting my information from the council during the meeting like I need to. So I have a question, do you guys think the dispensaries only get, only have what they grow? Okay, so they're, they're getting, they can get their product, they're getting it. It, it's just because it can't be grown within the city limits. It may, it may make it a slight bit harder for a little while until you figure all this out or to stay this, but unfortunately, we're not taking it away.
You are. No cost to the dispensary. Warning!
Just give me two seconds. One of the things that I really appreciate about living here in Lake County and specifically, specifically Clearlake is the fact that we are a community. You know, we're hashing this out in front of you folks, we want to be as open and public as we can be. One of the things that I saw at our last meeting when this was first introduced was true compassion. There were some people that were visibly upset by, you know, what we feel is necessary and the steps that we're taking, but it's a process. And as we go through the process, I'm happy to sit here and listen to and have, listen to what you guys have to tell us. One of the things I wanted to comment on was another member who was in the, in the audience contacted one of the other people that were there and said, we live out in the county and if you would like, we would be happy to let you grow on our property in compliance with Measure N. What I'm getting at is, in many ways, if you come up against an obstruction, we as human beings find our way to, to make it and make it work. We have been asked, not just here, but in other areas, to please make our city safe. And that's what we're arguing here tonight. And while I recognize there's a majority of you here in this room that is requesting allowance of growing for medical reasons, this is why I don't feel comfortable with that. And I've mentioned it before, I don't know what the legal plant size is. If we could identify that, and I didn't know from my personal experience, that six plants can be six huge plants, that will definitely have an impact on the neighborhood, it will definitely have an impact on the neighbors next door. And those are things that I feel are my responsibility to the council member to try to protect those. People will find a way, in my opinion, because I've seen it time and time again. And honestly, I know there are people in this room, regardless of what we do here tonight, they're going to do what they're going to do. And then we'll have to deal with that as a code enforcement issue. You know, we heard issues of constitutionally inappropriate and due diligence. This is a Fourth Amendment issue because law enforcement isn't going in and taking their rights away by arresting or jailing them. It's a civil action. We'll deal with it in that civil manner and process that was laid out earlier. And with that, I'm going to say to all of them.
Pass anything? Oh, Burina, are you?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I'll hold up. I appreciate the work that you're putting into your new job, spoken you.
I would like to, while I keep explaining that, I'll go right back to our comments. As the night goes on, and we continue to try to come to some conclusions here, and we listen to each other, and we do the work here at this table, I see it dwindling out there. I see the people leaving. They may be tired, they may be ill, there might be a lot of reasons, but the ones that I see saying, thank you, because I honestly believe we're getting down to the true maybe medicinal users that really care. And so, thank you. So hang on, hang on, I'm praising you. Can you wait one minute, please? But what I'm saying is, excuse me, excuse me, I'm praising you for one thing, but I can criticize for something else. Now, come on. I'm trying to say thank you for sticking it through and listening, because sometimes it's not what you want to hear. And we've obviously seen the ones that don't want to stick it through, they've already left. So just be patient with us, and I thank you for that. And I'm trying to take up a little bit of time and be nice to you folks, but if you want to be rude back to me, I'll be done.
Before I talk about this specific thing, you guys already know where I stand. I'm not feeling any movement right now, so now I'm going to discuss the zero ordinance. But before I do that, I want to say something, and it might not have anything to do with this item, but there's a reason why we have this problem in this town. And it's my opinion, doesn't have to be a fact, but to me is, people decided to take opportunity by the horns. And I don't feel that we have, in the last 20 years, I don't know, taken the time to create the opportunities so people can have those opportunities to find the life that they are looking for, to reach for the dream that they are looking for, and to be able to live the way they want to. Unfortunately, that decision is to do something that we do not want and we want to get rid of, which means that it has the chance that it will hurt their livelihood, which we don't have a choice. We have to do that. When we leave this room, no matter what decision we make, we need to really, really push to create those opportunities because now we're going to take away something that they decided to create on their own because we didn't create it for them. And I don't say we, I'm just me, past history, us right now. More than ever, it will be important for us to create those opportunities. So now, to this ordinance.
I don't feel that we're taking away their livelihoods or their medicine, but maybe you're right, there was an opportunity that got maned with, and that's what's going to be taken away, in my opinion. It's not their medicine, and it's not their livelihood, it shouldn't be anyways, because even if anyone was using the ordinance that we have put in place, it wasn't for their livelihood, it shouldn't be. So unfortunately, we've come to this area now where there is zero that because of exactly what you said, people maned with it, an opportunity where they could see a benefit possibly to their livelihood in multiple ways, I guess.
And in my mind, it's too bad that we have to push those that try to do it the right way. So to this, I'm looking at Section 10-8.050. I'm personally a little concerned about that, page 6. I'm concerned about that section of a order, to be able to order a summary abatement of the nuisance. That is one of the major issues that we are actually right now in federal court for in the county because of wrong reason to do summary abatements. I know that their reasoning right now, actually, they were given two reasons. One is they weren't prepared to actually go through the warrant process, which was rejected. And the other was because of water issues, which is also being rejected. I don't see specific reasons and criterias of how summary abatement would go about, which worries me that it's too open and able to really put us in that same hole that the county finds itself in. I personally think that summary abatement is not necessary. I think we can find a warrant fairly quickly to abate the property. I don't think it takes weeks. I think it should take no less than a day, if not one full day, to get a warrant to go on a property and abate it. So I'm not quite sure that, to me, the danger is more the people on that property for their type of activity that they're doing that's illegal, but this is lame that it could be for somebody with two plants. That I have a moral problem with. But at the same time, if it's somebody with 100 plants and it's gang-style activity, and then I still think the danger is the people on that property and not the plants, we can get a warrant, 24 hours later, we go and abate the property. I just don't want to see us being in the same hole as the county finds itself in. The last thing we should do is find ourselves another way to get through.
There's no, at least the advice that I would give code enforcement is not to do any kind of abatement without a warrant. And that's, even though that's in there about ordering a summary abatement, the mechanism by which we would do this would be to get a warrant from a court before you do that. I think it'd be exposing the city to liability, and that's part of what's discussed in 10-8.090 where it says, "Obtain an abatement warrant to secure, remove, demolish, raise, or otherwise abate the nuisance."
But when I read the A, 10-8.050A, if there finds an immediate threat or danger exists with the health, safety, or welfare of the public that they may order a summary abatement of the nuisance, that sounds to me like that's a warrantless abatement. Am I incorrect in my seeing what I'm reading?
I agree that that's an interpretation that a reasonable person can have, that would not be the advice of how we would advise code enforcement. If you want to modify that to eliminate Section A, you certainly can do that, but I think we're hearing direction from the council on that. If the council's direction is not to issue any summary abatement without an issuance of a warrant, you know, I think that's something the staff would certainly follow. I would feel more comfortable with warrants being asked for prior to doing any kind of abatement on anybody's property. That's just my personal opinion.
but what I'm having an issue with there is if, say there is a child or another reason that someone's doing that, checking on things, and finding a problem, they need to be able immediately take that child to or remove the instance that's a danger.
And to me, if there's a...
Read Section B1.
And I read Section B1, and I'm still uncomfortable without the warrant. If there's a child that's, if there's a problem, we can go in there with CPS and deal with that and save the child's life, but to have to abate someone's property without a proper warrant, to me, just still opens us up.
The council certainly has liberty to recommend deletion of that whole section of 8.050, if it's the will of the council.
My recommendation is, with any new law or ordinance, there's going to be training in its enforcement. We don't want to violate anybody's civil rights, obviously, and by the creation of this, there would be an operating procedure in implementing the ordinance and also enforcement of it. I think if we, and I think as department heads, staff, give direction to their subordinance, that that's the direction, and I think the ordinance is whole. The other part of this is, we have, for lack of a better term, cooling off period, where you can stop that immediate violation, make sure that their lives aren't in danger or peril, and then, while it's stopped, legally obtain that abatement order while protecting the safety of those that are on the property involved. That's also a procedure following criminal warrant services. So I don't see that this is a variation of that.
What you're saying, so what you're saying is that should the need arise to summarily abate a nuisance, that we could still ask for the government to back up the choice that was made?
Once, that's correct. Once the situation is, becomes stagnant, okay, it's everybody's secure, the immediate danger is maybe not mitigated, but the threat has been stopped, and time is allowed for that warrant to be obtained, and I believe that's what Section B1 is for. That's how I read it.
The way that I read B1 is that you're asking somebody to deal with the problem on their own, because the public official shall make a reasonable attempt to notify the owner, not notify a judge, for a warrant unless I'm misreading.
Immediately stop, is that right?
Yes. And at that point, you don't need a warrant, somebody applies is what you're asking for. But to ask for the threat to go away and to actually abate the threat itself, to me, are two different things. The only reason that I bring this up is because of where the county finds itself in. I know that I've spoken with the chief about the county, and I know that he does not intend to have any situation like the county finds itself in, and I don't think that the city intends, but I want to maybe change the wording slightly to make sure that we have no chance of falling in that same trap that the county finds itself in.
I was told there's no guarantees in life. Sorry about that, but unfortunately, we're asking people to go out and do some hard work. But again, with proper training and direction, which I believe has been stated here by staff, we're making that an issue out of nothing. That's just my opinion.
Could there be verbiage added here that indicates that we go make a formal attempt for a warrant or something like that?
That's in the same, following the section.
So this is instead of a warrant, this is if the situation arises where something, we cannot wait for a warrant, something has to be done.
It's 4D, you just put the section reads, the immediate threat to public health or safety.
But we would still then go forward and follow the rest of the procedure, which is get the warrant, make the notification, so on and so forth. So it's not, it's not like the bug stops there. And then we don't have to do the rest because we made a summary decision. But I get what you're saying.
Please clarify that when you abate the nuisance, that what we're talking about here as a nuisance would be to grow.
No. What I'm seeing is if we have a hazardous situation, be it hazardous chemicals, flammable chemicals, perhaps even some of the things that Chief Sepeda brought in in our last discussion on this topic, we, not councilmembers, but through our direction to staff, and this, in this section, are authorizing them to stop that threat, to remove the people that are in danger, and then move forward with the rest of the process. So you're moving, you're moving the immediate threat to public safety. I don't see plants in here, but it may be just a part of that process. A code enforcement issue.
It poses a danger, basically.
Correct.
Whatever poses a danger, whether it's chemicals going into the water, that makes it a flammable. We have 48 hours, my own, act guns, dogs, and danger would have to be secured, and then, maybe get a warrant to do that abatement.
Everybody here, the council, hold it there.
I'm going to keep passing this back and forth. Okay, so am I not correct? Is we secure the danger, dogs, people out of there, chemicals, where they're not running off into the lake and everything, and then we would go get the warrant? Am I correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Your radication would not take place without a warrant. Maybe there are other...
And the big picture?
Right, a big warrant, correct. I don't know what those situations, emergent situations, to me, but whether, like you said, chemicals, flammable, that kind of situation is where you need to stabilize immediately, you have the ability to take some action.
We actually did have a situation about a year and a half ago. It was not involving a grow, but it was involving a chemical. We did not know what it was. It actually affected one of our employees to the point where he had to be taken to the hospital. If that had been associated with a grow, we would have utilized this section to go in and deal immediately with that chemical, and then come back, as our attorney just said, with the warrant to actually go in and deal with the plant. But when you have a situation where you have individuals who simply walk by a parcel and are affected to the degree that they have to be taken to the hospital with additional follow-up after that, that's the type of situation I think that we'd be addressing with a summary.
And I'm still going to beat this down for a little bit. I guess my confusion is that we use abatement of the nuisance in multiple things, because we're being told here that they need a warrant. If the property owner, lisi, or other responsible party fails to abate the nuisance within the time specified by the city council or the public official, and is not granted a time extension, the public official, upon authorization of the department head, shall obtain an abatement warrant, secure, remove, demolish, raise, or otherwise abate the nuisance at the expense of the owner. Still, it never says plant there.
So the word nuisance is...
So compared to the other one where it's abatement, a summary abatement of the nuisance, to me, again, there's still not that detail of, yes, we need a warrant for a plant, compared to this one, which is just an abatement of nuisance. Can we maybe add plant on the 10-8.090 so that definitely, when you're abating the plants, we have to have a warrant?
That would be fine. I think maybe a cleaner thing to do is back in 8.050, after we said... I think maybe a cleaner thing to do is back in eight point oh five oh, after we say, may order a summary abatement of the nuisance, we can say, such nuisance shall not include the eradication of plants.
I guess I have an issue with the, I think it's in ten dash eight, or one, where the notice of lien shall be informed, basically putting a lien on the house to the point that eventually the property can be confiscated. Morally, I have issues with somebody growing a minimal of plants to have their home taken away from them. Like, I can understand doing that for somebody with fifty plants, I can understand doing that for somebody with twenty-five plants, twenty plants, but anything below six, to me, seems a little extreme to take a piece of property. I mean, in the way it's written, you could have one, and if you still can't afford to pay for the abatement, or I guess you choose that's your own prerogative, but if you, let's say you can't afford, at what point is our limit to be able to take somebody's property away from them for something that's very minimal, and possibly also very minimal nuisance to the neighbors themselves?
If you don't mind, I'll comment on it. Really, what it, the mechanism was that you can assess a tax on it or lien against a property. Foreclosing against a property is a very different thing, and that's not what the indicated, what's stated in here. So, the city could attach a lien to that property, so at the time when the person sells it, and they owe, let's say, two thousand dollars of assessments, we're on there, the city would stand in line as a, as a lien holder and try to collect upon that sale. They're not looking into, they don't have the right to foreclose properties for that.
My mistake on that. Is that the same deal as you have to wait five years if they don't pay it off, or we can get that money before they have to sell it, or we can wait a lifetime and never get anything?
Well, with the lien, you're waiting as long as it takes to sell the property.
So, what's, what's the one with five years that we can recoup either from the county or... Gotcha, taxing, my bad. Thank you. I don't think I remember any of these. And so, that's, that's... No, those were my major issues, other than not wanting a zero grow. And obviously, I am not...
Well, thanks, everyone, for all the work you're doing, you've been doing. I know I'm super tired right now, I've been losing sleep for a week trying to decide what to do here, and what would be the best thing. I don't take these kind of decisions lightly. I really do feel that we're making the best choice for Clear Lake right now, by moving to approve ordinance number one seven three dash twenty fifteen, read by title only, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, California, amending Chapter ten of the Clear Lake Municipal Code, adding Section ten dash eight, abatement of public nuisances, and ten dash nine, administrative penalties, and repealing and replacing Section ten dash seven, medical marijuana cultivation, to ban the cultivation of medical marijuana with the changes mentioned.
I'll second. No call vote? Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Pata?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cortino Gibson?
Aye.
Mayor Nizelov?
Recall, folks!
Quick, boys! Do not ask any of you council members! Did I need to state that the second meeting...
You're creating more hurdles! Recall!
All the rest is now! All united here!
See, it's us!
Water will never run out, sir!
I can't believe it.
It's okay, we got enough seats up next year! We're gonna have people...
Did I, did I need to state that the second meeting would be held on February twenty-sixth of twenty fifteen?
So, if, if you cannot be quiet and follow the guidelines of the meeting, you are more than welcome to leave now, or you can stay for the rest of the public meeting, because we still have to do some business. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, report for determination not to terminate the declaration of local emergency issued on December eleventh, two thousand fourteen, and ratified by council action on December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen fourteen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a fairly straightforward item. As you know, the, the city council did a confirm on December the twen-, uh, December the eighteenth, the declaration of emergency for the storm that occurred December ten and eleven. The request this evening is to continue that declaration for a period, another period of thirty days. We have submitted the damage report assessments and similarly for that process to continue through. In discussing with our protocol instructor, we felt it would be prudent to keep it open for another thirty days when the council will agree with it then.
Is there any questions from the public on item number nine? There is? Okay, do you know, I'll bring it back.
I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the terminate the declaration to extend the declaration of local emergency issued on December eleventh, twenty fourteen, and ratified by council action on December eighteenth, twenty fourteen.
No call vote? Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton? Vice Mayor Cortino Gibson?
Aye.
Mayor Nizelov? Moving on to item number ten, consideration of a letter to Senator Mike McGuire identifying the city's priority issues. And this item was on the agenda by Councilmember Sabatier.
No, I think you identified, Councilmember Sabatier did request and receive consensus at the last council meeting to have this item on the agenda, and was as a result of conversation that both he and Councilmember Perdott had with Senator McGuire when they attended the League of California Cities New Mayors and Councilmembers Academy, and I think it would be appropriate for Councilmember Sabatier to address it, since that was his request.
I will just go over the major points. We met with Senator McGuire in Sacramento, and what was awesome is he took great interest in helping us, we have Senate constituents, so he asked us to give him a list of things that we're looking to deal with here in the city of Clear Lake, things that are, that affect us within the county and also in the state. One of our first demands was the creation of a statewide guideline to govern marijuana cultivation, particularly, local government has been forced to adopt regulations that are not consistent in our often in conflict. I don't think I need to give more information, we already kind of talked about this for a long time today, we know we have a conflict. Assistance in obtaining funds and/or additional grants for community well-being, including Prop forty-seven monies to support our police department with the increased numbers of released inmates, funding for abating abandoned cars and recreational vehicles, funding for enhancing and further developing our parks and natural resources, not just for aesthetics, but for the health and well-being of our residents and the economic development opportunity that parks bring to our community. Funding is needed for periodic dredging at the boat ramps, docks, and inlets to the lake. We would like to offer interactive experiences in our parks and are looking for funding for assets like free high-speed Wi-Fi internet services, implementing park master plans as they are developed in projects like the community swimming pool and sporting venues. State initiatives need to be identified and funded to address the threat of invasive species like the crocodiles, eel muscle threat, that if established in Clear Lake will have a significant adverse impact on our economy. The potential for increased water rates is real, as is the harm that would be caused to the environment, other wildlife, ability to use beaches, and other recreational enjoyment, and potentially the destruction of archaeological and historic sites. AB one oh nine and Prop forty-seven need revision to improve public safety. AB one one oh nine did result in the state meeting the federal mandate to reduce the state's prison population, but has resulted in offenders with a history of criminal violence being released in the post-release community supervision program. That should never have been discharged. Criminal history needs to become part of the evaluation process on every individual being considered for the release from prison. Prop forty-seven needs to be updated to, at a minimum, make possession and use of date late drugs and theft of guns felonies not misdemeanor theft, as Prop forty-seven changed recently. Also, we mentioned the Way to Well Build Program, the asset to our community, our county, and to the state if our success through this program is done, and we're asking four ways for Senator McGuire to take part in this program so we can be that much more successful. It's pretty much what we are asking on this letter. Right now, this letter is in front of us, so that we can add, delete, edit, whatever it is that we may want or need or request from Senator McGuire, who is a really high-powered guy, so he's really, quite, too energetic. So, it seems like he wants to get these things done. And I think this is a very succinct list, but again, maybe it's too succinct, so let's, let's discuss.
I concur with Councilman Sabatier, but in addition, and I also want to mention that this was a collaborative meeting with the Senator, along with members of Lake Forest City Council. Other issues that were mentioned with even specificity for Clear Lake was the addition of roads. And I, Madam City Manager, if we could include language for road improvements, I know that this is an issue that the state is actually advertising on radio and television as far as our decaying infrastructure and looking for ways for funding road improvements and repair, but also for qualifying cities and counties for code enforcement. I'm grateful to hear staff reports as far as CDPG monies that may be coming forward, but in that interim, if we could please add that, because that was part of what was discussed in that meeting, again, with Senator Lake Forest. Thank you.
Yes, you can direct the letter be sent with the modifications that were identified.
Would anyone from the public like to add or take anything out of the letter that Sabatier... Mr. Luis, you have two minutes.
Okay, so, all right, well, I wanted to come up and ask you to add one more thing to the letter, and that is ask Senator McGuire to come to informal meeting with you. I have the fortune of spending a couple of days with the Senator in my new position as Information Officer for the Office of the Bureau of Law and Equalization, and we spent a couple of days in Eureka and for the county, and we had a wonderful meeting with the Eureka City Council that was hosted, and as long as you guys don't, you know, discuss basically the Senator's role and nothing specifically, you're not violating the Brown Act. So, I would encourage our council to include in that letter an invitation to the Senator to come here. We're very lucky to have Senator McGuire, and he's going to be some of the best representation of the state legislature we've had in the last, very engaged. He's a former school board member, so he councilman, so understands the local issues. He's actually the youngest school board president in California history, age nineteen, I believe it was, so anyways, I would encourage him to come here, he's amazing, energized, and he, I'm sure he would love to do that, just as he did with the Eureka City Council, so that's a lot of us.
Just missed Clear Lake. Something, maybe I missed it, but we need to encourage our legislators to change the supermajority vote on specific and special items like we've tried to pass in the past, and it'd be nicer to just drop to fifty-five percent, but I think that's something we should ask and give examples of the hard work we've done to try to pass, you know, something a number of times for our roads, and everything else that passes by a war facility, still doesn't pass enough to implement. So, I would encourage you to do that one also, that's something that we really need to do, and they, they've talked about it for a long time, and at least dropping it from sixty-six point seven down to fifty-five percent will make a huge difference for all of us.
I don't usually get up and speak, and this really isn't my thing, but I look at the time, and I look at how much time we spend talking about public safety and marijuana, and then I look at the time that we're spending talking about, about this bill that you guys are talking about, seeing now with Senator McGuire. And it's talking about cleaning up our parks and our roads, which are all safety issues. Why are we spending, we're spending so much time on something that isn't really going to get us anywhere? Is the bill, what you've just passed, if, or we're not even certain that we're going to have the funding to keep this going? I don't know, I just think, I think we spent so much time on something, and we're not spending that much time on really important issues.
This is about a letter being drafted, though, considering it's not about...
It's a recommendation to send a letter to the Senator, so he can ask for his help on these important issues.
Right, but it's just as important, how much support are we going to get to even write it up? Or is this the same amount of people that we're going to have here when we actually have to...
It's gonna, it's gonna be sent or just added to it.
Just a letter. We want more support on the more important stuff, too.
Thank you for standing up.
Members of this council, it's always important to reach out to far distant public officials, like the ones that we don't usually see or talk for all about, as mentioned. So, I am in agreeance with you sending that letter, because we, we know all the help we can get. Congressman Gary Mendy was here the other week, down in Clear Lake, at the Live Out of Senior Center. I was the only person from Clear Lake who was there, who asked for his help on some of these very things that you are asking. these very things that you are asking and requesting the Senator to do. Now, I don't know if you know about the meetings down there now, but nevertheless, I took the liberty to represent my city and ask for, that Congress must help with CBGs, whatever other safety issues that we have over here, and especially infrastructure about our dirt roads and so forth, how many miles of them. So I encourage you to continue to reach out to these far distant members of Congress and the Senate. In fact, it would be a great idea, not like Joey's idea, about you guys asking him to come here. He not only needs to meet with you, he needs to meet with the constituents, with the people that may have voted for him, may not have voted for him, but he still represents us all. So thank you very much for you doing that.
Earlier, we mentioned what's important, and I'd like to say, you know, we pretend like all this is important, and you guys have some say-so, and you guys can make a rule in the real world, you know, and your opinion matters, and none of that is true. You have no intention of, right now, we have a dying planet, and you guys can care less. I see you consuming, you have your plastic bottle of water, you know, we don't care nothing for the planet.
We need to stay on topic here.
And it might be off-topic, but you know what?
We have rules, and we follow them.
Well, you know...
So we're talking about this letter, and have something to say.
This is of utmost importance, we have a dying planet, and you guys can care less.
Excuse me, thank you. Closing public comments, seeing no one further on the side, bringing back the council.
I agree with the comments from Joey Lewis and Rick Mayo. What we originally meant with the Senator, the idea was to draft a letter of what we were looking for from here, so then he could come back to us, meet with us, and have a formal meeting where we can discuss how he could work with us to get us what we're looking for. I agree that that part was not in the letter, to say something, we look forward to meeting with you, I don't believe that was in the letter, so maybe adding that at the bottom would be a good touch. So thank you for bringing that up.
So do we have a meeting on that? Okay. It is, it is the City Manager's check for our report.
I'll make it fairly short, very short. We, since the last meeting, did have a planning commission meeting, the purpose of which was to meet in a workshop session to review the Parks Master Plan, the 2003 to 2010. We will be coming back to do further discussion on that, but it was a beneficial meeting. I attended the League of California Cities Annual City Manager Conference last week, and I just wanted to make everyone aware that the city manager recruitment is underway, applications are due by end of day on March 6th, and then we will be, I've been in discussion with the mayor on the process to follow immediately, follow on that in the following week. That's my report.
There was a poetry-out-loud competition today at Lower Lake High School. The top two winners received scholarships, and the winner will go to Sacramento and represent our county at the Poetry Out Loud State Competition. So yay! And that was Ms. Jenny Landetta, who will be representing us in Sacramento. And I'd also like to ask about two things, the one on the agenda, and actually, I've asked for one of them last time, and I'm just going to reiterate that I'd love to talk about the current land of ordnance again. And also, one of the, I'd like to talk about the current land of ordnance. I don't think it's working. And also, the gal that came up and spoke to us from Burns Valley PTC about some issues with the road in front of there, I'd like to have that discussion sometime, but over the sun, because right now, we're too late in the school year to do anything about it, and we do have way too many things to get ready for.
I would recommend that perhaps the mayor take that topic and refer it to the Safety Committee.
For brevity, I have no report. I believe that my only thing that I can say is I went to the APC, Lake Transit Authority meeting, interesting for my first meeting, didn't realize I would get 50 pages of packets for each meeting. Next time, I'll know not to look at night before. What's really interesting is what's going to happen, just to give you a little bit of information that I received, is the four-lane expansion for all of Highway 29 from the 175 cutoff all the way to Deener Drive. They really want to make that the route to go from 20 through 29 to 53. I think that's an opportunity for Clear Lake to take full advantage of all that traffic flowing in our direction, rather than really processing people from 20 all the way across straight to Williams. I'm looking forward to it, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but I think we need to prepare for it, and it's really exciting to know that that's coming up. That's it for me.
You stole everything on that one, but that's okay. February 10th, I attended the loan committee meeting at City Hall. February 11th, I was with Mr. Sabatier at the APC in Lakeport. I also came back that day and attended the土地水工程 board meeting, and that evening went back to Lakeport and sat in the pay board meeting for the evening, of which we discussed a budget that is going to be a reality this year. It's very exciting. Some funding is quietly flowing into pay. And then today, I did a staff meeting at City Hall. That is my report. So with that, meeting adjourned.